Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Planning Board Special Meeting, Wednesday, June twenty seventh, two thousand twenty eighth, two thousand twenty three. Notice that this meeting was given to the Township Clerk and posted on Township Bulletin Board and Township Website Calendar and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noted to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start after ten thirty P M. May I ask everybody to rise for the pleasure of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, the next regular Planning Board meeting will be held July fifth, two thousand twenty three, at seven thirty P M via Zoom. Roll call, please, Hamlet.
Mister Albert?
Here.
Mister Cardoza? Mister, where you know?
Here.
Mister Jensen?
Here.
Mister Klein?
Here.
Uh, Mister Morgan? Mrs. Maraldo?
Yeah.
Basil Presley Williams?
Present.
Mayor McCartney?
Present.
Mister Wilks?
Present.
Chairman Bagel?
Here. Okay, Miss McGovern, would you swear in the Township Professionals, please?
Yes, um, who do we have? Here we have, uh, Elizabeth and who's our?
Um, I'm Zachary Jordan.
You're here for, okay, if you could please raise your right hand, uh, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, would you each put your names on the record, uh, in your positions?
I am Liz Laney from Phillips Price. I'm the Board's Planner tonight, substituting for Paul Grigio.
Okay, and Zachary?
And I'm Zachary Jordan with CME Associates, Township Consulting Engineer and affiliate for John Hess.
Thank you.
Okay. The application before us tonight is PB twenty-three dash oh seven, Pure Natural Vibes LLC Block eighty-four dot oh one, Lot sixty, Zone B two, four seventy Prospect Avenue. The application for conditional use and minor site plan approval to permit a licensed cannabis retailer for the applicant, Mister McPherson.
Thank you, Doctor Bagoff, and members of the board. Uh, good evening. Always a pleasure to be with, uh, this board. Uh, Mayor McCartney, Council President Williams, again, always a pleasure. Uh, Doctor Bagoff, uh, the chair had, uh, already described the nature of this application, uh, conditions, the conditional use application and my minor site plan application, uh, property, as was noted, four seventy Prospect. This is a Suite one hundred, Lot eighty-four point zero one, Lot sixty, and it is in the B two zoning district, uh, where cannabis dispensary retailers are permitted as a conditional use. For the record, I should say Kenneth McPherson of the firm Givens P C on behalf of the applicant. I'll start affidavit of service and proof of publication have been provided to the Planning Board Secretary and the Planning Board Attorney. Uh, this meeting, uh, is properly noticed from the applicant's side and the board's, uh, point of view for a special meeting. Uh, thank you to the members of the board for calling this special meeting and, uh, in general, for your service, uh, to the township. Uh, applicant is proposing to locate a licensed cannabis retailer in an existing commercial building with approximately two thousand sixty-five square feet of commercial space within Suite one hundred. Uh, this is an existing commercial building, uh, with about twelve tenants. I'm sure many of the board members are familiar with it, uh, prominently located on Prospect Avenue. Uh, physical changes proposed as part of the application include interior building renovations to the Suite one hundred commercial tenant space uh, and approval of signage. Uh, no modifications are proposed to the site's layout besides possible restriping of the existing, uh, parking areas and driveway, uh, if deemed necessary by the board. Uh, the owner of the property has entered into a shared parking arrangement with the adjacent property owner to the north. That's four sixty-six Prospect Avenue, uh, providing for the availability of thirty-five additional parking spaces for use by the commercial tenants of four seventy Prospect Avenue. Uh, Township Council Resolution three three five dash two two submitted as part of this application, uh, that that represents a resolution of local support for by the township and recognizes that the property is properly located within the B two zone and suitable for the operations of the Class Five Cannabis Retail Dispensary. Uh, July twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-two, the CRC issued an award letter, uh, a conditional award letter to the applicant, uh, for a Class Five Cannabis Retailer License. This is a micro license, um, so that is a smaller in operation just by virtue of the word and definition. Um, this is not a large operation. It's not a large, uh, corporation or anything of that sort, uh, that we will get, uh, more into that testimony from uh, the applicant's representatives. Uh, as mentioned, uh, cannabis retailers are a conditional use and the conditions are spelled out in the code at section twenty-five dash twenty-four point two A. And there are seven conditions and I will note that, uh, Mister Greigle's review letter uh, dated June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, which the applicant and its professionals are in receipt of, uh, notes that applicant, uh, complies with the conditional use criteria and, uh, we will, uh, further bolster that, uh, via testimony at this hearing. Uh, also for the record applicants in receipt of the memorandum of the Board's engineer, Mister John Hess, uh, dated June twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three, and we will respond to those comments in that letter, uh, via the testimony. Uh, again, just to go over the conditions very quickly, uh, the applicant shall be required to have a local license. Applicant will comply with that condition and will continue to seek a local license from the township. Uh, a prerequisite being, uh, this Planning Board approval. Uh, no licensed cannabis entity shall be okay within a hundred feet from the property line of any property of any school building owned and operated by West Orange Board of Education. Applicant complies, uh, that we submitted two hundred foot property list, uh, with this application, uh, to that point. No licensed cannabis entity shall be housed in a vehicle or any movable or mobile structure. Uh, applicant complies in this case. It's the existing Suite one hundred space uh, within the existing building. Uh, number four, no cannabis entity shall be allowed to operate as a home occupation. Uh, same idea. Number five, any signage for licensed cannabis entities subject to Planning Board approval. Uh, applicant has submitted signage for approval with his application. The architect will address that. Uh, six, uh, licensed cannabis entity shall meet the security measures set forth, Chapter five dash thirty-four of the West Orange Code. Uh, applicant complies in this case and has submitted a comprehensive security plan, uh, both as part of its application for local support, uh, which was granted and, uh, the applicant has also, uh, submitted its security plan uh, to the Chief of Police, uh, in the lead up to this hearing. And, uh, the, the Chief of Police has confirmed that that is satisfactory to his, uh, knowledge and, uh, we, we will testify to that as well. Uh, finally, number seven, uh, cannabis consumption areas are prohibited and applicant will comply here. Uh, no, no consumption area is proposed. Um, very quickly, we do have, uh, five witnesses, uh, Mister Chairman. We will go, go, uh, through them as, as fast and as thoroughly as possible. Uh, two representatives of the applicant, uh, the civil engineer, architect, and a security consultant. Um, quickly, I just want to address, uh, Mister Hess's letter, again, June twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three, uh, specifically, uh, page, page three, I'll start with, uh, design comments, one A and one B, uh, one A being, uh, copy or delineation of existing or proposed deed restrictions or covenants. Uh, an email was sent to Mister Hess's office, uh, this evening with a copy to the Planning Board Attorney, providing a copy of, uh, the deed restrictions and easements for the property. Um, there are none that affect, uh, this development. Uh, there is some utility easements and there is a, a private driveway easement, uh, very historic. That's no longer in use, uh, that goes to the back of the Eagle Ridge, I believe it is, condo association. Uh, but again, that, that that easement's no longer in use. There's a gate and there's no access to, uh, the road within Eagle Ridge there. Um, so we will happily submit that as a condition of approval again. Uh, so I just wanted to address that at the outset. And then one B, uh, list of required regulatory approvals or permits. Uh, this is a application on a county road. Um, so the applicant, uh, applied for and was granted on June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three from the Essex County Planning Board, an exemption from Essex County Site Plan Approval. Uh, we provide a copy of that to Mister Hess this evening as well as to the Board Attorney. And of course, we'd gladly provide that as a condition of approval. Uh, applicant is submitting that, uh, a local license itself is not a prerequisite to, uh, development and signing off of the plans, uh, for this particular development. Uh, a local license pertains to operating the property, not to developing the property. And further, uh, the application for the local license in the township, uh, prerequisite is Planning Board Approval. Uh, so just for the record, we want, wanted to, to note that as well, uh, for the board's, uh, consideration. Uh, and we were also seeking, uh, a number of waivers. Again, that, uh, no need to go through them all, Mister Chairman. They are listed on page two. Uh, actually, let's see. No, I'm sorry, page three. Uh, under comment two, uh, most of these, uh, waivers are related to a, uh, larger development or site plan. Again, in this case, this is, uh, mainly an interior renovation of a relatively small amount of, of retail space for a micro dispensary. Uh, so we are seeking waivers, uh, for the record, as reflected in Mister Hess's, uh, planner's report, or I'm sorry, engineer report. Um, with that, Mister Chairman, if I'd like to call, uh, applicant's first witness, uh, the project engineer, Mister Charag Bakar of Arna Engineering.
Hey, just, uh, Mister, the new friend you're in here, the car, could you, uh, please raise your right hand? Uh, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you please put your full name on the record, spell your last name, and, uh, provide your professional address?
Yep, last name Takar, T as in Tom, H A K K A R, first name Charag, C H I R A G, I'm with Arna Engineering, A R N A. Um, Principal at Arna Engineering, address is one four five six Ferry Road, Dulles Town, Pennsylvania, one eight nine oh one.
Would you like, would you like to wide ear him, uh, Mister McPherson?
I would. Thank you. Uh, Mister Takar, if you could give the board the benefit of your education degrees, uh, professional licenses and experience appearing as a professional engineer before, uh, planning boards in the state of New Jersey?
Sure, uh, I have a bachelor's and a master's degree in civil engineering. Uh, I've been a professional engineer in state of New Jersey since two thousand and three. The license is in good standing. I testified in front of multiple boards in different counties in all range of projects, including, uh, cannabis projects.
Okay, unless any members of the board have any questions, we accept, uh, Mister Takar as a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey. You have the floor, sir.
Thank, thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh, Mister Takar, if you could, uh, just, uh, give the board the benefit of the property location and, uh, your, your site visit and your preparation of your plan?
Sure, um, I'm going to share the screen with a site plan that was submitted as part of the, uh, application. Everybody has a view of my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so just briefly describe the property, although most of the board members are aware of it, uh, Prospect Avenue at the bottom of the page. Uh, the gray hatch is the outline of the existing building, building footprints about eight thousand square feet, three-story building. Um, the access is off of an paved driveway that leads up to the rear of the site, which is where most of the parking spaces are located. Um, the access to the building is to the front and through the rear. Um, like Ken had suggested or mentioned, the, the applicant's not proposing to expand the building. Not neither is any modification done in terms of utilities, uh, et cetera, no extra impervious getting created. Uh, however, we are modifying the striping of the handicap spaces. Uh, the handicap spaces as they exist do not comply with the current code. Uh, as part of this application, we are proposing to restripe them. I believe the CME letter, uh, comments, uh, you know, bring to the fact that some of the signage, uh, the handicap signage is also not compliant and would, as part of this application, bring the plan to compliance. Um, there is one more thing that I'd like to, uh, bring to the board's attention, um, and it's in CME letter. There is a discrepancy between the application and the site plan in terms of number of parking spaces. The, the, the site plan notes thirty-eight parking spaces, the application notes forty-two. And the reason for the discrepancy is that the survey we had did not show striping that actually do exist in this area that I'm pointing to. Um, and once, when, if you count them and these spaces do exist, it's just that it wasn't on the survey. As part of the condition of this approval, we'll make sure that, uh, the actual striping that exists is reflected on the plan.
Thank you, Mister Takar. So if you could, uh, confirm the number of parking spaces existing at the site, uh, with those, uh, parking spaces you just mentioned included?
Yeah, forty-two parking spaces exist at the site. Um, and so as a condition of approval, the striping that's been missing would be added to the plan and then the total count would get to forty-two.
Thank you, Mister Takar. Um, Mister Takar, if you could, uh, address, uh, some of the comments engineering related in the report of the board engineer that was referenced?
Sure, um, I will start on page four because, uh, uh, we covered page three, which is the design comment, B one and B two. Um, going to be three, I'll skip that because, uh, the applicant's going to testify, which is the, the comments related to the hours of operation. And, uh, I believe the applicant's going to provide direct testimony as to the hours of operation, uh, the, the, the functions of the building, the deliveries, et cetera. So I'll skip that. Um, item number four, which relates to the existing parking lot lighting. Uh, the comment states that should address to the board to demonstrate that the parking lot lighting complies with ordinance. Um, we have a request here, the, as I mentioned, there isn't any site plan modification being suggested, um, or proposed. Um, no parking changes, no expansion of building. The only reason that we get triggered into the site plan is because we are making modifications to the striping for the handicap, which is non-compliant. Um, considering that the site has operated for years with this parking configuration. Um, I think it would be, uh, very beneficial to the applicant who's only occupying a very small space within a very large building to be required to then demonstrate compliance on a parking lot, um, which already exists. Um, you know, the applicant's not the owner of the facility. The applicant's only occupying a two thousand square feet suite within the building. So it'd be our request, uh, if we could be granted a waiver as to the compliance of the lighting in, in terms of the ordinance requirement as, you know, compared to what exists at the site. Um, that's so that-
If you could, on that point, there, there is lighting existing, uh, as marked in your plan, the, the, the light posts?
Yes, yes, there is. There is lighting existing here. I'll just point to it. So this is the light pole. The light, the lights do exist. There's building mounted lights. Uh, it's just that I, I, it'd be a request because, uh, the applicants really are, you know, the only fraction of the space being occupied by the applicant in to, um, put a burden of compliance onto the lighting, which is exterior to the space that the applicant would be leasing would be, uh, a little bit onerous on, on the applicant. So it's a, it's a request to the board that if we could get a waiver on that aspect.
Uh, thank you, Mister Takar.
Yep, I will keep going. I'll just touch on, uh, things if it's all right with the board that relates to civil engineering comments because there is a direct testimony coming on some of these things, which would serve to answer the questions in the CME letter. Um, so I will skip over to, um, page five, which is item number thirteen, top of the page, which relates to the discrepancy that is just explained related to thirty-eight versus forty-two parking spaces. Um, it's a, it's a, it's a will comply. We will make sure that the, that the striping that exists would be reflected on the revised plan. Um, calculation of the item number fourteen is required parking calculation. We will provide that. So that's a will comply. Um, fifteen I'll skip because that's related to hours of operation and number of spaces on an adjacent facility. Um, next one is item number sixteen, which is showing existing parking spaces on four sixty-six Prospect Avenue, which is an adjacent par, uh, property. We will comply to that. Uh, item number seventeen is related to, uh, some fading of the parking spaces. Um, and the request is to redo the parking lot striping and handicap parking spaces. Now again, this is, uh, uh, like I mentioned, this parking spaces do exist. We are, uh, for certain fixing the handicap parking spaces, uh, because they're not in compliance. But I have some pictures that I'd like to show to the board. I, I believe if we can get, uh, some relief on the restripe, but again, it's this Gibbs is only occupying a two thousand square feet, um, space within the existing building. But I just wanted, this is picture as of April thirteenth. You can see this parking lot stripings are, uh, slightly worn out, but they're visible and you-
I don't think we, uh, see the picture.
You don't have a view? Okay, one second.
And Diana, if we could mark, uh, this coming up as exhibit A one?
When it gets up there, yes.
Yes.
Yep, one second. Let me-
Megan, can we, can we put up, uh, Mister, um, the, uh, CME letter for Mister Hess as he goes through it? So we can see the comments?
Trying to find it. Um, Doctor Bagoff, Chairman Bagoff, uh, the letter was never provided to me, uh, so that's why it was not on the agenda.
Yeah, it wasn't on the agenda. So, uh, Mister Jordan, do you have a copy of the letter?
Mister McPherson does because I asked him for it this afternoon. I thought it was just not in my package. Um,
No, 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 the, that letter was never sent by, uh, John Hess.
Um, I do have a copy of the letter.
Could you post it as, uh, Mister Takar goes through it?
Yeah, so, uh, do you want me to email it? Like, share it? How would you like me to go about it?
Yeah, Mister Jordan, email it to downtown@washington.org and then I can post it.
Okay, thank you, Mister Jordan.
Okay, we where, which one is A one?
Uh, we'll pick one, uh, Charag, maybe.
Yeah, I could, I, I, I was just gonna, I can send this over to, I will mark them up and I'll send it over. But I just wanted to start with the Google aerial. This is just an aerial view of the property in the rear and you can see the striping, which I, some of it is fading out. I do agree, but large part of it is in good shape. You can see the parks are not all the car, the cars are not overhanging as a result of feeding of the space. They're squarely within the stripe. Um, so it's just a request on our part to having not to restripe the entirety of the rear lot, we are definitely updating the handicap spaces. And I have some pictures that I wanted to just, I can, as a sample, I just wanted to bring up.
So, uh, Diana, we'll do this one. Aerial is A one.
Okay, thank you.
Google Earth. This will be was A two.
All right, next, this one is A two?
This is would be the rear?
This is the rear of the property.
Which direction, Charag? Do you know?
Uh, one second, I can, I can just tell you. So it's east. It's looking this way.
Okay, rear parking east.
Can you?
Yeah.
On this, on, on the site plan that you just put up, do you have a picture of the area with the no stripes?
Uh, no, actually, the, the stripes do exist in here. So this, yeah, so let me just add the great point. See these parking spaces? They do exist. That's the light pole, which is right on the site plan, right there. So you can see that these parking spaces do continue all the way. It's just that the survey hadn't picked it up. So it wasn't shown on the site plan, but as part of the condition of approval, we'll incorporate that and we'll represent what existed to site. So that they do exist.
Um, I sent the CME letter to downtown.
Yep, and, um, just going on with the, moving on with the, with the review comments on page five. We are on the last item, which is eighteen. And it says it appears to be the handicap parking spaces don't, signs don't comply. And you would, as I testified, we would bring those into compliance as well.
Mister Zakar, will you lose any spaces when you restripe the handicapables, uh, lot?
No, no, we, 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 we are not, as my plan demonstrates that. So we should be, we are not going to lose parking spaces as soon as we're, yeah.
I have the letter now and I'm sending it to, uh, the email addresses that I have for you all.
Thank you. I think.
And you got to post it on the website, too. I couldn't find it on the website either.
Okay, I'll send that to Jim.
Yeah, um.
That about ends our affirmative testimony for, uh, for Mister Takar, Mister Chairman, before he has any questions.
Oh, I have a million questions.
Okay, 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 okay. Deep breath, deep breath. Okay. Uh, Vice Chairman Wilks, do you have any questions?
Um, no questions at this time.
Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions?
No, Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, Council President Williams, do you have any questions? Council President Williams? You unmute yourself?
Apologies. I did not have a question of Mister Takar, but I did have a question regarding the additional parking and that was, um, stated by Mister McPherson. So he could just reiterate.
Yeah, we're gonna get there.
We're gonna get there. Um, Council President and Mister Chairman, we will address uh, the additional parking agreement, uh, by, by one of the applicant's representatives to, uh, sign the agreement. Um, so that testimony will be coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mister Alper?
I do not.
Mister Verena?
No questions at this time, Mister Chairman. Thank you.
Mister Klein?
Yes, so if, if the applicant is not going to restripe the parking lot, is the landlord representative here that can say that he's going to upgrade the striping in the parking lot?
Yes, he's here on the line. Uh, I will note, uh, Mister, Mister Chairman, uh, the, uh, landlord has, part with discussions with the applicant has, uh, agreed at the board, deems it necessary uh, that he'll agree to stripe, restripe the parking lot.
Okay, is there a lighting plan that shows what the foot candles are and that the lighting is adequate?
Uh, we did not. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mister Takar.
No, we, we do not have a lighting plan, um, that shows the existing foot candles.
And is there going to be any testimony to the, um, security, uh, in the back that has to do with lighting or no?
Um, uh, there'll be a security consultant providing, uh, Mister Chairman, uh, security, uh, testimony. Uh, and I'm not sure I exactly understand the question in regards to the back.
Well, it, where's your, where was your entrance going to be to the, uh, facility?
The back of the facility. Oh, yes, there will be. I thought you meant the back of the property. I'm sorry. There's no access from the back of the property. So yes, the answer is yes.
Okay. So this seems a little bit backwards to me. I would have liked to have heard from the applicants first so they could tell us number of employees, number of customers, so that we can know how many parking spaces they get. So I guess I'll have to wait till they come back because you've got forty-two parking spaces, but there are other tenants in the building, correct?
That's correct. And that testimony will be coming.
For this suite?
I'm sorry, how many, there's only one?
How many spaces are allocated for the two thousand sixty-five square foot Suite one hundred? How many spaces are allocated for the two thousand sixty five square foot suite one hundred for the cannabis user?
Um, Mr. Thakkar, any calculation?
Well, we, that's one of the comments, which is to provide a breakdown of the parking spaces based on the tenancy and we will provide that. So we don't, the the parking is not based on tenant, it's just, it's just a common parking lot for entirety of the building. So it's not divvied up that way, but we will calculate that and provide that. The ordinance, the 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 West Orange ordinance says the cannabis use does not specifically note a parking requirement. It just says it's a subject to consideration of the board. So if you were to take, you know, one space per two hundred and fifty square feet, which is what current requirement is for office, medical office, personal service stores, then you would end up with about eight or ten spaces.
So are you gonna have?
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Klein.
Are you gonna have a traffic expert explain that a lot more than eight parking spaces are going to be required for this two thousand square foot cannabis dispensary?
Mr. Klein, no, traffic expert was as as part of the conditional use requirement. And there was no request for any traffic testimony as part of the board planner or board engineer. We will have testimony coming up this evening from the applicant as to the parking agreement and the specific use at at the other property four sixty six, which is primarily used in the evening time. You might be familiar with it, the four sixty six event venue space typically empty during the day, which is the basis for the agreement.
So again, I think you should have put your applicants on first to explain the hours of operation, the peak periods of the operation, and that they are or not coincident with the peak of four sixty six.
Well, I thank you for that advice, Mr. Klein.
So Mr. McPherson, Mr. Thakkar, the question that the board may find useful is how many square feet are used for the sale as opposed to storage and administration? How many square feet will be open to the public? I I guess is a is a good question.
Eleven hundred and seventy eight.
Correct.
Okay. See, the architect hasn't gone yet either, so we we don't know that.
Okay, well, we will.
Well, it's a little out of order. All right. So then maybe we just let them put their whole case on, then we ask the questions.
That'd be a great idea.
Thank you.
Outstanding. Mr. Klein, are you done with your questions?
Well, no, not until the end, when I know what all the
I mean, for Mr. Mr. Thakkar, are you done with your questions for him, sir?
Well, other than. Oh, wait, oh, wait, oh, wait, this is not, yeah.
There was a, I'm sorry, there was a list of all of the tenants and sort of the hours or the usage, and I can't I can't find where that where I saw that.
That's, thank you, thank you, Mr. McGovern. That is submitted on the project description that applicant submitted. It does feature the tenants and their uses. Primarily, you know, disparately, doctor's office, realtor's office. There's a, there's a very small state DOT office. You know, primarily office use, and we have it broken down by tenant. We, you know, we're glad to get into that further in the testimony, if the board would like that.
Okay, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Morgan here?
I don't, I don't think he's here.
Oh, okay, then that's easy. Okay, Mr. Smeraldo.
No questions at this time.
Okay, Mr. Jensen. Mr. Jensen.
Yes, I'll see.
Okay, I realize he's here. Does he have any questions?
No, I have no questions at this.
Thank you. Mr. Cardo, Mr. Cardo, do you have any questions?
No, I joined a little later. I'll need to catch up during the rest of the testimony.
Okay. Look away, fun is yet to begin. Ms. Ley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one question that was raised in Mr. Grogil's letter. It involves the two parking spaces that are sort of along the southern lot line, and it looked like maybe only one was striped. And he had requested information about that. He just, if you could provide some details on that.
Yes, certainly. Actually, the parking spaces are striped. It's it's there are two parking spaces adjacent to the trash enclosure. It wasn't, it wasn't on the survey. They do exist. So I will add that to the to the plan as 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 a condition of approval.
Okay, thank you. That's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Uh, yes, I do have some questions. I'll, you know, keep it with the engineering questions. Uh, could you repeat your response to question number fifteen?
Question number fifteen. Uh, question number fifteen is going to be addressed by the applicant as part of the, as part of the agreement with four sixty six Prospect.
But we can't say, Trug, because it's submitted with the board's application. Uh, I'm sorry, the applicant's application that the additional parking spaces is thirty five.
Yeah, the number of spaces is correct, thirty five.
At four sixty six.
At four sixty six, correct.
Okay, on the plans, on the south end, there is a square fenced area. Could you explain what that is? It's, there's no callouts.
Uh, one second. That is the trash enclosure. So here, if I could load up my screen one more time, one second. You guys can, you have a view of my screen? Everybody can see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that, is this the question, this rectangle area?
It is.
Yeah, that's the trash, yeah, that's the trash enclosure.
Okay, yeah, I'll wait for the applicant for the other trash related questions.
And and the question related or the or the comment related to the two spaces versus one is there is a stripe here, so therefore there are parking spaces. The stripe does exist, we'll just not on the survey, so we'll add it.
Okay, let's see. All right, so my last question, and you can tell me if you want to defer this to your architect. If you can address the board on how the facility will keep orders from escaping the premises. That would also include from orders preventing from getting into the other suites in the building?
Yeah, that I think that would be covered by the architect. Architect or the applicant, or the applicant, correct?
Okay. All right, those are my questions for now.
Excellent, thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Thakkar about his testimony? Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Thakkar about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any yet. Doesn't look like anyone.
Okay, we're gonna close that portion of the application. Thank you, Mr. Thakkar.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next applicant's next witness, Mr. David M. Lawrence, project architect.
That is me.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Lawrence, I'm trying to find you. Okay, if you could please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could please give your full names by your last name and give your professional address.
David Lawrence, L A W R E N C E, and my professional address is one hundred Walnut Avenue, Suite two ten, Clark, New Jersey, zero seven zero six six.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lawrence, if you could give the board the benefit of your experience, education and degrees, professional licenses and appearances as a professional architect before other boards in the state of New Jersey.
Sure, so I have a professional bachelor's as well as a master's degree in architecture from NGIT. I have had my my own business and I've been licensed in the state for three years as well as a couple other states. And I've been working, working in the industry for twelve years. I have also, I've also appeared before several boards in the state of New Jersey.
And Mr. Licensed, your your license, Mr. Lawrence, your license is active in the state of New Jersey presently?
Yes, it is.
Unless any members of the board have any questions, we accept Mr. Lawrence as a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. You have the floor, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Lawrence, if you could, thank you. Share your screen and provide the existing floor space versus the proposed.
Sure.
And can you identify the document, please? When you share.
Yes, can everybody see it?
Yes.
Okay, so the document is the planning board set of drawings that was submitted for review.
And can you provide the date on this one or identify somehow?
It was submitted on on April eighteenth of twenty twenty three.
Okay, great, thank you. And it's called the Tenant Fit Out?
Yes, the the name of the project within within my firm is Tenant Fit Out at the at the address four seventy Prospect Ave, Suite one hundred.
Thank you.
All right, so I will begin by going through the zoning and code information. The project is located within the B two zone in West Orange. It is in a a building that is is built, you know, typically for office, you know, commercial interior projects. The the gross square footage of the space is twenty four, two thousand four hundred and thirty eight square feet. It is being filed as a an M use. And in total, the 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 space can house thirty eight occupants, and there are more than the required amount of fire exits. Here you're seeing the demolition plan. The site is currently built out as a physical therapy slash wellness business. The the previous tenant has moved out. And luckily, the interior partitions, none of them are bearing. The the building is built using a post and beam system and all of the interior partitions can can come out. Besides the the fires there, of course, and and the other demising walls are remaining. And the the one bathroom within the space and the adjacent chase wall is existing and and is to remain. Here is the the design plan. As brought up earlier, the space that's open to the public is one thousand one hundred and seventy eight square feet, as well as a sixty seven square foot entry vestibule for people to come in and and present their IDs to the security guard or receptionist that's sitting at the check-in window. The 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 main floor primarily consists of an open space for people to wait in line. There are three points of sale, and behind is is a display, a display case. And there are also jewelry type display case boxes between the the points of sale. On the back of house side, there there's an office for operation control, a safe basically for for money storage, an IT closet, product storage, which will have a a high security door, employee break room, and the aforementioned restroom. Here is the reflected ceiling plan. The the space currently has acoustical ceiling tiles, and there will be acoustical ceiling tiles going into the new project with linear LED lighting that's that's integrated into the into the ceiling grid. There are no HVAC supplies or returns shown at the moment. They will be located by the by the mechanical engineer and mechanical contractor during during permit drawing phase as well as construction. And it was it was also brought up, brought up about odor control. It was not made clear to the applicant that that was a a requirement. And the the way of thinking is that the the products come in sealed plastic containers. There will never be any product out in the open, and it's not being consumed on site. And the the product will be sold also in the containers in the same way that it's brought in. So theoretically, there should not be any any odor within the space. If it is a condition of the board that we will need to put in some kind of odor mitigation, that can be done. It can be done using charcoal filters, either integrated into the HVAC system or as standalone filtration units. This is just a finished plan. The the space will be primarily luxury vinyl plank, commercial grade, as well as carpeting. And most of the walls will will be consisting of just, you know, general high quality Benjamin Moore paint. And there will be a few accent walls with with some some trim and decorative things being applied to it that you will see later on in the renderance. Here are some interior elevations. This view is the the checkout counters and the the feature wall that I just that I just mentioned, as well as other walls consisting of signage, display cases, either off the shelf or or custom, and some backup house spaces like the the break room and and the office. There are several large windows in the space now, but all of the windows, in in addition to getting like shock detect detection, they'll also be receiving security grades on the inside of the space. And I did not include the security plan within within this presentation because the applicant did not really want it to be released to the public. But as mentioned before, it was it was sent to the sheriff's office and he gave his blessing. This is an axonometric view of the space with all of the 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 different spaces that I mentioned before, the main retail space and the back of house spaces, as well as the materiality. And here is one one rendering. And here is one more. So that that completes the the set of drawings that was put together by my firm. In addition to that, I would like to exhibit a few more items. One is exterior renderings that that the applicant has gotten from from other professionals. It shows the four different facades of the building.
Was this applied to the board? Mr. Lawrence, was this applied to the board already?
Uh, I I do not know the answer to that.
Yes, it was.
Want to be sure. Okay, keep going. Thank you.
So there there is existing signage on the building. This is the the front of the building on on Prospect, and this is the rear, just, you know, signage of all the different tenants. And the only signage that's being applied for under this application is is signage that will be applied to the the exterior door that leads into the hallway that brings the you know, the user to the space.
I just, just as a correction, I don't have this page with my plans. A, this was A two one three.
I don't have it either, that's why I asked.
I don't have the cover page.
Our our plans, our plans stop at A two one two.
I have the security plan and I don't have a cover page, but I do have that last page.
That's what I have.
Well, then, if we could Yeah.
Okay, so somewhere, I guess in the code office are all of the plans, and then however you made packages for the board members, maybe things got left off. So let's, everything that was testified to here are part of the plans, is that correct? If you could read off the pages of the plans.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. If you could read off the pages of the plans, but first, Mr. Lawrence, if you could just note kind of the discrepancy between the top left, top right and bottom left as opposed to what the building looks like now.
Sure.
And note that exactly which signage and the only signage that we actually are only proposing.
Sure, yeah, so I I will get to the drawings that were prepared within the initial drawing set, I guess after I I go through this. So the the top left, top right and bottom left, they were created from, these renderings were created from images by another professional before the building was painted and and had signage, new signage put on the building. So this is basically, you know, what the building looked like back then. But currently, the the building, sorry. Uh, looks like this from the rear. There was a paint job done where the different Uh, looks like this from the rear. Uh, there was a, a paint job done where the different trim elements received a, a brown paint. Um, and also
And that was done by the owner, correct?
Yes, that was done by the owner. Uh, and, and this signage was also replaced by the owner, um, after those renderings were, were produced.
And so that the only signage being proposed as part of this application is
And, and sorry, this, this also was replaced since the, by the owner since the rendering was, uh, was produced. Um, but yes, the, the only signage that's being applied for by the applicant is the um, the lettering that's going on, on the door. That brings you into suite one, suite one hundred.
And the rest of the signage is just uh, that's existing at the property today, um, that was, uh, you know, the owner set up is just a list of the tenants in the front and back.
And, and will, Mr. McPherson, will somebody testify as to the parking requirements of those, uh, tenants?
Uh, we, we will discuss, yes, we'll discuss the, uh, the general, uh, parking requirements and needs of the other tenants as well as the uh, property at four sixty-six.
Great. Thank you.
Um, and I suppose to go back to, uh, the issue that was brought up uh, before, the, the drawings that were created initially and, and were, um, provided to the board initially were T one hundred, uh, A one hundred, A one-ten, A one-twenty, one-thirty, one-forty, two-hundred, two-ten, uh, two-eleven and two-twelve. And A two thirteen, which, uh, again, uh, holds the exterior renderings, I, I guess was, was added after the initial application was, was sent. Or initial set was sent.
And is your testimony that your firm, uh, did, provided all of these drawings?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
Thank you, um, Mr. Lawrence, if you could go back to, uh, A two-one-three and just, uh, if you could for the board's uh, benefit, the, uh, red dots at various locations.
Yes, the, the red dots, um, that are camera shaped, uh, they indicate cam- cameras that are being, uh, installed as, as part of this project. Um, and I'm sure the security consultant can, can speak to those items, uh, more at a later time, uh, as well as a, a new lighting element that's being, uh, installed above the, the door. That brings you into the space.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's all the, uh, direct testimony from this witness.
Uh, well, I, I'm sorry, I actually had
Sorry, go ahead.
Responses to three items that were brought up within the engineering, uh, report. Um, numbers ten through twelve apply to architectural and the others apply to civil or, or other, other, uh, witnesses. Um, so number ten states the, the plans must be revised to include a written and graphic scale on each sheet. I do have written scales, um, but I will comply and add graphic scales as well. Um, number eleven, uh, says that the, the building, uh, footprints between the site plan and the architectural plans, uh, have discrepancies. Um, the, the reason for that was that they were not, uh, created in the same orientation. Um, and I do not have north arrows on my drawings to show which way is north, which I should have included. Uh, but I will add north arrows, uh, uh, you know, a- after, after this meeting, uh, so, so the orientation is more clear. Um, also number twelve, uh, states that, uh, sheet A one forty uh, says that Suite one hundred is, is located on the northeasterly side of the building, whereas she, uh, A two, A two thirteen shows that it's located on the, on the easterly side, um. So i- it's not so much of a discrepancy as well, as, as much of a misunderstanding. Uh, so I think when the, when the reviewer was, was reviewing the plans, it may have looked like the the, uh, the tenant space was directly off of the exterior, but it, it's not. Um, the, the entrance to get to the space, as you can see on two thirteen, is through this door. And that door, uh, leads you to a hallway. Which is here and you, you walk down the hallway. Go through this door, make a left. Make another left and then this is the door to Suite one hundred.
You're not showing.
You're not showing it, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So you don't have a footprint of the whole first floor?
No, I do not.
I'm sorry, of the entire building, Mr. Klein, the, the
Yeah, so we can see how you get from that pure Sweet one hundred door on the outside, which is clear glass into the building, down hallway to a door that says purely Sweet one hundred.
Okay, we can have the applicant describe that. It's relatively simple, just, just the hallway. And then, uh, connecting to the door.
But there are other, other suites come, suite come off of this back door, no? This is the, this is a completely exclusive access from the back to Suite one hundred?
No, I believe there's an, at least another suite access separate. There's a separate door on the inside. I think that was shown on the architectural plan, but um.
Yeah. Can we go back to architectural plan?
Sure.
Please?
Vestibule, I believe.
Um. Well, there, there is another, uh, so yeah, this is the, the entry that, uh, that gets you into the, the space from the hallway. And there's another tenant, uh, adjacent to this tenant, um. Uh, that I think you, you can reach from, from the same hallway, but it's it's, it's further down the hallway, um, and the applicant has, has worked has worked out the, um, you know, the wayfinding with the landlord and she may be able to, to speak to that better than I can. Here's the entrance.
So there's an entrance into a vestibule. And then there's a door to the right that goes into the area.
The retail space.
Right, the retail space. It, but I don't see a hallway on this plan going to the next site.
Right, it's an incomplete floor plan.
Yeah, so I did not include any, any context of the hallway. Um, basically the, the hallway is, is out out here and then, uh, it turns left and continues, uh, straight.
Right, the hallway is not particularly part of the suite. That's an entrance to the building. Um, this is, the floor plan is complete as to the Suite one hundred, as the hallway doesn't include the suite. So I, I, I think that about addresses it.
So it's about a seventy-foot walk from the back door to get to the vestibule? Does that sound about right?
That sounds right to me, Mr. Lawrence.
Halfway down the building or even a little bit more, actually, it's like.
Um, so uh, can, can everyone see my, my, my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so yeah, basically the the entry is here and you, you walk down this, this long hallway. And then the, the suite is in, in this area.
I guess if you, if you pulled up the civil plan, maybe you could orient this. I understand based on the shape of that floor plan, which corner of the building? You're in the front corner. The south. I'm sorry, I flipped my, I flipped my thing up, southwest corner.
Yes, yes.
Take up the whole prospect width of the building except for the fire stair. And then you go back, what's the dimension from the corner of the building? Um, the, the flat, the, the on the bottom of your drawing. What's that distance? You've got one, two, three windows. If I look at three D image of thing, I see one, two, three, four, four rows of windows. In a fifth one, actually, on the, well, it's a stairwell, so I see one, two. Uh, alright, I, I, it doesn't matter.
Uh, what is, what is this, this dimension?
Along the bottom of your drawing, bottom of your draw.
Uh, no.
Yep, right there. Yeah, so that's about how long.
That would be about, um, about forty feet, I would say, between thirty and forty feet.
Alright, so then you've got about a, yeah, then you've got about a, a ninety-five foot walk to get down to that sweet ballpark. Okay, alright, now I understand.
Right.
But there's no, you don't have a waiting room. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, you go in the right order you want to go in.
Go ahead, go on, Mr. Klein, you're, you're, you're on.
So I've never seen a cannabis facility without a waiting room. Do you have a waiting room?
Um, there's, no, there's not a real waiting room. There's just the, the entry vestibule, uh, here, which is, you know, seven by almost ten.
Right.
So we can have the applicant address the, uh, operations of the store.
Yeah, you're gonna have to because you got three, you only have three points of sales. You're gonna have more than, you know, more than eighteen customers an hour. Yeah, it's, yeah.
Well, this is a micro dispensary. Uh, we, we will address, again, the applicant will address the
I'm not sure I understand what that means, but okay, alright.
You will.
Um, I mean, I, I can speak to that, um, a little bit. So since the space is under twenty-five hundred square feet, it, it, uh, categorizes this dispensary as a micro dispensary.
Really?
There are, uh, certain, you know, limitations that come along with that. They can only sell so much per, per week or per month. They can only have so many employees. Um, and, you know, it, it can't be above twenty-five hundred, uh, square feet, so it's not as, you know, as large of a, of a store as some of the other dispensaries that are open now.
So how does, well, I'm gonna have to ask you then, because you brought it up. How do you limit the number of customers that come to this facility? Based on some state law that says you're only allowed to have so many ounces sold a day or a week or a year? How do you limit that?
Uh, I think that would be better, better answer.
Yeah, alright, good.
By the applicant.
Alright. We'll wait. So, so you said thirty-eight occupants can fit in the building, just, that's just by code?
Yes, just per square footage, yes.
I'll wait, I'll wait for the
Well, in, in, in the tenant space, yes.
Right, right, okay. Now I'll wait for the applicant. Oh, so then that back door doesn't have to be opaque glass because it, you can't see the facility. So only the opaque glass is the, the glass on the angled wall up at the top of your drawing. And I guess technically one of those draw, one of those windows, well, that's the restroom. So I guess you're right, the break room could be okay, yeah, alright. I guess you're good.
Um, but, uh, I'm glad you brought that up. So the, the, uh, the windows that, that face on the areas of, of operation and storage, uh, they are going to receive, uh, frosted, uh, tints.
Okay.
And unless there are any other questions, that concludes my testimony.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Chairman Wilkes, do you have any questions?
Um, no questions at this time.
Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions?
I do not. I'm familiar with this building. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Williams, do you have any questions?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alper, do you have any questions?
Um, no.
Mr. Guarino, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Klein, do you have any other questions?
No, I'm gonna wait till the, till the applicant comes in forward, yeah.
Thank you. Mrs. Smiraldo, do you have any questions?
The only question I have is, uh, since existing building and they're doing renovations, is anything, uh, fall under the retrofitting codes? Any of the code, oh, any of the codes right now?
Um. Yes, but that, that has not been totally, um, worked through. I, I will work through those issues in, in the next phase of, of the project.
Okay, so there are, there are some issues that have to be addressed under the retrofit.
Uh, yes, I, I believe since we're going from business to mercantile, it is a, a more restrictive use, uh, so there, there will be extra uh, requirements that will be, uh, that will be, um, spoken to in the, in the permit drawings.
Do you have any idea what they may be that are a concern for the board?
Um, yes, I, I've, I've done one other dispensary that was previously a, a business use and was being turned into mercantile. Um, the I, I guess the, the biggest thing would be fire rating of the demising partitions, like the, the walls and, and the ceilings. Um, and I, I need to do some more research, but I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure that this, this building complies with, with the, um, the, the mercantile, uh, requirements, but I will need to double check that. Uh, the other major issue would be, um, uh, fire alarm systems, uh, and I, I will need to check that as well.
Okay, I just want to make sure we had that for the record. That's all I have.
Okay, so any of the, any of those other conditions will be, uh, shared with the, uh, engineer. And we can make, and we can make that a condition of the applicant.
What is that condition, sharing?
Uh, that Mr. Smiraldo?
I, I'm just concerned with the, the, um, that the building isn't compliant with any of the retrofit codes of the building.
Yeah, so there's a code called the, um, the NJUCC rehabilitation, uh, subcode, subchapter, subchapter six. Uh, and that, that is the, the code that, uh, Mr. Smiraldo was, was referencing.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Mr. Jensen, do you have any questions? Mr. Jensen? Mr. Cardoza, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Laheny, do you have any questions?
No questions right now. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Jordan, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Lawrence about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Lawrence about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Not seeing any yet.
Seeing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Listen, uh, we're going, going to next call, uh, at the representative of the applicant, uh, Ms. Nordea Gibbs.
Ms. Gibbs. You could please raise your right hand. It's really hard, everybody like moves around and feels like, if, uh, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please, uh, give the board your full name, spell your last name and your address, please.
My name is Nordea Gibbs, last name G I B B S. Address is two zero six Tremont Avenue, Orange, New Jersey, zero seven zero five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Ms. Gibbs, for the benefit of the board, could you please provide, uh, your education and degrees, your occupation and experience? Uh, your title, uh, with, uh, Pure Natural Vibes.
Um, I want to start by saying thank you guys for accommodating us tonight. I really appreciate it. Um, my name is Nordea Gibbs. Again, I am the COO of Pure Natural Vibes. Um, co-owner with my husband, Darnold Gibbs. I hold a master in business administration, uh, specifically human resources management. And I also hold a bachelor in, uh, healthcare management. Um, I have over twenty years of business management's experience. Um, and we've been operating our, our CBD hemp business since two thousand nineteen, so we are not new to the cannabis space. Um, but we are pursuing entry into the legal cannabis, um, industry. I will
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. Uh, if you could, uh, address kind of the operation of the dispensary from, from walking in to purchase and, uh, things of that nature.
Right, okay. So I, I kind of went through the list that was, um, memo, and I just wanted to address what's here, uh, to start. Um, so Pure Natural Vibes plans to operate a micro dispensary at four seventy Prospect Avenue in Suite one hundred in West Orange. From the hours of eight AM to seven PM, seven days a week, as permitted by current township ordinance. Um, if the permitted hours are changed of the ordinance, our operation will comply. Um, we can anticipate majority of all orders to be placed online in advance. Um, and all sales transaction will occur inside the facility nonetheless. Uh, at no point will any of the items be delivered outside our facility uh, to any customers and no onsite consumption will be allowed. Um, the standard processing time for an online order, it takes about six to twelve minutes on average from arrival time to departure. Our goal is to stagger the pickup times to avoid, um, overflowing of parking or the cumin of parking. Um, would you, would you like me to, Ken, would you like me to address the parking agreement for that purpose?
Uh, sure, well, let's, let's, yeah, let's do that. Let's, uh, address the parking agreement, uh, Nordea, if you could. Um, your understanding of the, uh, we'll start with the four sixty-six, uh, use uh, and the nature of your parking agreement.
Yes, um, so we we have a parking agreement in place with the adjacent tenant for sixty-six Prospect Avenue. Um, they operate after hours, so they, uh, have events in the evenings. Um, so we have allowed they have allowed us to use their parking lot for overflow during our operating business hours. Um, in the event, we do have additional parking, um, or need additional parking spaces for our customers, uh, at that point in time.
Um. Thanks, Ms. Gibbs. Thanks, Ms. Gibbs. And if you, if you, uh, just know, Mr. Chairman, the, um, this is the way that this property has operated, uh, pursuant to a prior approval, uh, that was submitted, uh, planning board approval submitted as part of this application, um, in connection with, uh, the third floor addition of this building. Um, that's, that is in the board's packet as to prior approval. That agreement, uh, I believe expired in twenty eighteen and with, it was with the same, uh, four sixty-six property owner. And that's exactly what's being re-implemented, so to speak, here. Um.
Mr. Peterson, the, there was an agreement?
Yep.
For the, uh, for an upper level business in that building, is that correct, with four sixty-six?
It was the entirety of the property. But it was in connection, it was a condition of approval from, uh, of the planning board's approval related to a use, or it's a zoning board, I'm sorry, uh, related to a use variance.
Okay, so the building needed those extra spaces?
Right.
For the business that was to be put on the third floor?
I don't know that it was for that specific business, but that's what it was in connection with.
It's the whole building.
The whole building.
That is expired.
Right.
So the building is not in compliance with the zoning board agreement at that ti, at this time now?
Um, I won't make that proffer, um, Mr. Chairman. That'd be for the zoning officer to determine. Uh, there was, you know, there's, there was a different use before this tenant. Um, you know, you'd have to compare the use.
So we, so we have to have the zoning official see if the building is not in compliance before this tenant uses the space that, because of that, if that agreement, if the, are there, are the, is the entire building except for this space occupied?
I, I don't know that, Mr. Chairman. I do know there's, I'm not aware of any zoning violations. Uh, we've requested an Oprah report and there were certainly none that came back. Um.
Did, did your, did your applicant come, uh, provide for us all the tenants in the building in a, in a document?
Yes, we can address that. That's on Exhibit G of the compiled application.
Right, where all the spaces occupied?
Or, well, are, are all the tenant spaces occupied currently? We have the owner here to address the rest of the spaces.
Well, we'll answer the owner, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, let's move on.
We can get him. We'd have to raise him from the general public.
Okay.
To be a witness. Uh, but, but we can have Ms. Gibbs speak about the tenant, the other tenants in the building, um, certainly.
Uh, have, have the landlord speak about the tenants in the building. I wanna get bogged down here. I'm sorry.
Sure. I do have a question about that, Mary.
Uh, Count, uh, Mayor McCartney.
Thanks. So, uh, are you saying you need to, if there are zoning violations, why would that be the responsible, responsibility of this person as a tenant?
What's not? It, it, it's not. I, I'm just saying that.
Just making sure.
Yeah, if the, if there was a, a zoning requirement of extra parking spaces for the building and that expired, and now the tenant is getting it for themselves only, then the tenant has no problem, but the rest of the building may have a problem. So I don't know, we'll have to, we'll have to contact the zoning official, but I don't wanna get bogged down on this right now. I'm sorry. Continue, Mr. McRierson.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Gibbs, if you could, uh, let's discuss, uh, deliveries and how that will be conducted.
Okay, uh, so we can anticipate deliveries to be, I would say, once or twice per week. Um, we did point out that we are a micro. I, I'm not sure of the amount of customers we'll have or what our inventory should look like as a micro, um, opening. But we can confirm that the vehicles will be no larger than, let's say, your regular Amazon, um, sprint vans. Uh, the boxes will be your typical brown or white delivery boxes. So there is really no way to identify what the delivery looks like, uh, coming into the space. And delivery time will be the normal business hours, nine to five. Nothing overnight, nothing super early. Um, nothing to cause any additional, uh, nuisance.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Gibbs, and, um, for the deliveries, um, it's your understanding these will be made at random times, uh, from third-party vendors. And, uh, you don't, you don't anticipate requiring any large-scale, uh, loading operation of products, requiring a loading space?
No, we, we will not, only because, again, as a micro dispensary, we are tapped at a certain amount of, uh, items that we can sell per month. So our inventory will be on the smaller side.
Thank you. Uh, could you address, Ms. Gibbs, uh, the, uh, trash generation and, and how, uh, refuse will be handled? From your, from your position?
All the cannabis items are prepackaged by state law. Uh, we cannot open any of the packages. They are from the cultivator or the manufacturer, straight through to us and, and in the customer's possession. At no point are we opening any of the items that we receive. Uh, so to talk about the odor, so we, we don't anticipate any odor at all, because the packages are sealed. We cannot open them. So there will be no odor coming from that. But as far as trash goes, you can expect the bare minimum standard office, uh, trash. We're not unlike, neither the recycled boxes from the deliveries, but nothing absorbent.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Ms. Gibbs, are you aware of the, the current, uh, trash, uh, enclosure at the property? At least based on your visits to the property and, and where, you know, where that's located and?
Yes, uh, the trash removal is actually, um, there is already a contract with the property owner to have a private company remove, uh, the garbage. So it's not gonna be on the township to take the trash from the property.
Thank you. And how about, um, anticipated number of employees, Ms. Gibbs?
So again, as a micro dispensary, uh, state requirements, we can have no more than ten employees at a time. We anticipate about six, five or six for the location that we have and the hours that we are operating. Um, but again, we would pass a max of ten and no more than that.
Thank you. And, uh, Ms. Gibbs, if you could address, there was a question about, um, how patrons are held when they come into the site, um, age of verification, uh, prior to gaining access to the retail floor?
If you remember from the description of the architect's floor plan, there is a vestibule in the very beginning of the entrance door, uh, where there is a transaction window similar to a back taller. The patron will enter through that door, will have to provide proof of ID, which will be verified for authenticity and then for age. And then they will be buzzed into the retail floor, where they will be greeted by a bartender to assist them with their process.
Uh, thank you. Um, Mr. Chair, that's all the, uh, questions I have for Ms. Gibbs at this time.
All right. Um, Mr. Vice Chairman Wilks, do you have any questions for Ms. Gibbs?
Um, no questions for Ms. Gibbs.
Mayor McCartney?
Do not have any questions.
Thank you. Council President Williams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did have a question just for verification pur, purposes. Um, Ms. Gibbs, you mentioned that there would be a person to verify identification as soon as they walk into the facility. Um, is there a second point of verification before the product is sold?
Yes, it is a two-step process. First, before they get entry into the retail floor and a second verification process before any sales transactions of cannabis items. So required to keep your ID out, we will be requesting it before you check out.
Yeah.
All right, and also could you give us, um, a, walk us through what it looks like going from the parking lot of your facility to the parking lot of the facility where you have some additional spaces? Are there any sidewalks? Is that an open, um, parking lot with traffic coming through? And how will that be managed if you do have to park off-site?
It is an open parking lot. Um, if, I don't know if you can remember the aerial shot that the engineer put up earlier. Uh, the entire back lot kind of spreads into each other. Um, so there are sidewalks on the, the front by the door, but the entire lot is open and there are arrows for the, the cars to navigate the, the parking. But it's in the event that we do have additional cars, it's a little, um, over what we thought we would have, uh, and, and someone outside to kind of manage the cars.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Mr. Alper.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, can you talk a little bit about, um, especially, you know, if, when you're new and you're, you know, presumably freshly opened and you might have, um, a larger number of people, uh, including some walk-ins who maybe haven't pre-ordered? Uh, can you talk about where you're anticipating, uh, queuing people before they can get inside? Will they be in the hallway? Will it be outside the building? Uh, will there be security, uh, out there with them to keep things orderly, you know, if they're wrapping around, that sort of thing?
So if, so there are actually two entrances to the building from the rear. One, where you see our logo on the door, there is actually a really long hallway. So it, it, it's a pretty, it's a pretty long way to get to our, uh, entry door. Um, we will have on, on-site, uh, security to help us navigate the additional customers. However, being that we already operate online, ninety percent of our business will be solely pre-orders. And we plan to kind of stagger the pickup times, so we don't have overcrowding, because we are a micro. Um, and that's pretty much how we plan to, to handle them.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Guarino?
No questions at this time, Mr..
Mr. Klein?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Um, so this is the first time I've heard of a micro dispensary. So what happens? How does it work? So you have a certain amount weight-wise that you can sell? And in the twenty, with, say, within day twenty of the month, you've beat that goal, then you have to shut down for the last ten days of the month?
Yes, so it's pretty much, so as, as per month, we're, uh, only allowed a, a, a small window of, um, inventory on hand, because we are a micro. That's really the only reason we are separated from a standard. Um, so that's pretty much it. No one has ever sold a thousand pounds of cannabis from, from a micro standpoint. Um, it wouldn't be bad if we're the first, but, uh, we do not anticipate selling a thousand pounds of cannabis, but that is our, uh, I guess, limits.
All right, so, let me start from the beginning. All right. So you don't really have a, how, how many people can fit in the vestibule?
I'm not sure.
Maybe the architect could tell us that. But so it, you're saying that somehow you're ninety percent pre-order pickup and only ten percent walk-in?
I would, yes.
All right, because I, I've never heard a number that high. I've only heard sixty percent pre-order and that's after people are used to what's going on. So they have to go online and do their research about what items they wanna get, order everything online, and then they basically just come pick up and, and go. All right.
Yes.
All right, uh. Um, so how many customers an hour can you accommodate with the three point of sales?
So those are, um, stationary, uh, registers. We will also have, uh, two kiosks and floaters. Uh, so we will be able to accommodate additional, um, customers within an hour, but we'll say maybe twelve people an hour.
Twelve people an hour and that, and that'll be limited by, so if I place an order on a Thursday and I wanna pick it up Thursday night, and I say I'd like to come at five, and you tell me, oh, you can't come at five because we've already got twelve people coming that hour. So you have to come at?
It's, it's not necessarily a conversation. It's a reservation. So you put the order, we get it in the queue, you get, uh, in a text when the order is ready for pickup. So if you decide you're, you're not coming when you get the, the pickup, you can come later. But we can't, we select the time. We can select the time when we put it in the, the, um, the holds, but we can't communicate a time and say come at five.
So what do you do if people are curious and you get forty or fifty or sixty percent of the people come in, walk in? How, how do you deal with that?
Then that's when we will have our security come manage that.
How would, can you be a little more specific? How, if, if you get twenty people that show up and they're not there just to pick up there, there to browse and to learn about the products and maybe purchase something? How do you do, how do you deal with that? There's twenty people waiting in the hall?
We can have people, um, in their cars waiting to not overcrow the building. And as I said, we can have a parking lot attendant kind of queue people as we rotate them out. Um, but that is something we'll work with our security.
So, full disclosure, I'm a traffic engineer and I just got done getting one approved in Raway last night. It wasn't a micro, but it was less than twenty-five hundred square feet. So I don't know, I guess we did something wrong maybe in Raway. But anyway, so you, your security guard, is he gonna have, I'm gonna help you. Is he gonna have like a QR code that says, here, folks, we're a little busy right now. Here's a QR code. Go on our website and place an order and you'll get a time when you can come back.
So I, I will defer the responses to my husband, because he is in charge of this entire security aspects with this, in reverse the facility.
All right. All right, so, and if you're telling customers to wait in their cars, then they're gonna be taking up parking spaces for the rest of the tenants in the building, so. And that's.
If, if it's, if it's pre-orders, the, the transactions are really quick. They're not really, um, a lengthy process.
Right, okay. But if it's not pre-orders, if people wanna come shop and look around?
It's, it's not that kind of store. There's no products out on the floor for you to kind of browse.
Oh, right, no, 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 I understand. None of them have any products out in the store, but what I'm saying is, it's, it's two miles from my house. I'm not gonna go all the way to Springfield on Route twenty-two. I can just come here. But you're saying I have to pre-order? And I, I'll know that after the first time I show up?
Yes, so what you see online is basically what your, what our inventory is. So all the information that you would get from us as bartenders and owners will be available online. You can always call ahead and ask questions. You can utilize pretty much all the resources prior to just coming and meeting.
All right, I never heard of that one, but, all right, so, so you're, you're gonna have five or six employees, depending on how busy you are. They're gonna be parking in the parking lot. Are you gonna tell them to park at four sixty-six?
If, yeah, if they can't, if they want to, we have the option between eight AM and seven PM, so.
I'm suggesting that you tell them to park at four sixty-six, so that your customers park at four seventy, if that's, that's okay with you. Yeah. All right, all right. Now, I know there's no odors, but every application I've ever worked on, they always have some sort of odors in the packaging and whatever on the outside. You have any HEPA filters or any kind of carbon filters that you're placing?
We actually do plan on putting in the carbon filter in, in the HVAC system.
Right, okay.
It's not, it's not, it's not a requirement, but we, we still plan on doing so.
Right, okay. And then I guess the, the interesting question then is, but it's not for you then, is what happened now that this parking agreement expired? I think we're gonna have to bring your landlord in to make sure that he renews it. Or, or a parking study could have been done that said, eh, guess what? We really don't need four sixty-six. We're good with the number of spaces we have in the back. So I'd like to hear from somebody that can, to speak to that. So, all right, that, I guess that's it for now.
Thank you, Mrs. Smeraldo.
Um, yeah, I have a, since brought the question, I don't know if it's for Ms. Gibbs or, or her husband, um, with security, but the entrance ways to the other, uh, locations, how's that gonna impact if there are people, uh, a lot of people lining up? If they happen to come in, uh, um, what do you do? How are you gonna plan on making sure that we're not inconveniencing the other tenants?
So, uh, as I mentioned, there are two doors in the rear. One door that our logo was pictured on leads down the hall into our suite. The second door to the left leads to the other side of the building, where I would say ninety-five of the other tenants access, because the other suites are along that corridor.
Okay, and being it's a long corridor, uh, is your security gonna be primarily at the door, your, your, uh, occupancy? Or the, um, the building itself? Because, uh, my concern would be that's, that somebody's going inside and buying something on the way out past to somebody along. I, I know you can't control every single aspect, but how do you control within the facility itself, somebody not passing off to another?
See, the entrance out of dispensary is not through the same door. If you, if you remember the floor plan, there's a completely different door on the other side of the retail floor that they exit. So essentially, they would be leading down to that other hallway that I just mentioned, to the other door that's on the other side of the building.
Okay, so one way in, one way out, and we're not, so, okay. That's fine, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jensen? Mr. Jensen? Mr. Cardoza?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm sorry if I missed this earlier. The parking agreement with four sixty-six. Um, so, as Mr. Klein was asking, so when you're suggesting to, potentially suggesting to? Um, so as Mr. Klein was asking, so when you're suggesting to, potentially suggesting to uh, customers that come in as walk-ins to park it at four sixty-six, was there, and again, I joined late, was there, um, any additional signage there saying, you know, overflow parking or something to that effect? Or was that just purely your, your passing that on as, you know, kind of word of mouth?
Uh, we can put a, almost like a roll-on sign during the day when we're there because I think the, it's kind of mutual at this point because we've been doing it since we've been there. Because, because the lot is so open, everyone, anywhere there's a parking space, people just park. Because I think the nature of the business is they already have that agreement. So, um, we can put an additional sign. It could be word of mouth as well. We just have to see the pattern once we open.
Okay, um, fair enough. And I think I had another question that's escaping me at the moment, but, uh, yeah, I, I think I can ask that, uh, when we hear from some additional testimonies. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Guarino.
I may ask a question. I thought, I thought I
Go right ahead.
Okay. And I may have missed this, but is there a separate entrance or delivery point in the facility different than the corridor to bring patrons into the building? Is there a separate, you know, delivery point?
There is not. It's just the two doors in the rear of the building and deliveries for us will obviously come up that corridor, um, to our suite.
Okay. So when products being delivered and brought in, there will be patrons and customers in the same area as the products being brought in?
So we, we know the delivery times. So if there are online orders, we can queue them later after delivery has come through. Um, but I, as I said, we have security if he needs to be out to escort the, uh, delivery personnel down the corridor, that's totally fine as well.
Okay. Mr. Chairman or Ms. Gibbs, thank you. Is there a point in time now, is there a security, um, uh, member? Or can I ask Mrs. Gibbs for the question on security?
There will be other security testimony, Mr. Chair and, uh, Mr. Guarino, following, following, uh, this witness.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. Thank you.
Ms. Lahaney, do you have any questions?
Um, nothing additional to what's been asked. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon, do you have any questions? Mr. Mr. Jordan?
Yes, uh, can you explain again what the hours of operation are gonna be?
AM to seven PM.
You said ten to seven?
Eight AM to seven PM.
The early rises.
Okay. Now, I guess just go, going back to, it's a security question, but it's something that you, you may have mentioned too. So uh, you mentioned that there is gonna be like kind of two points of contact, uh, if I understood that correctly, uh, and I guess one of them is before entering into the facility. So is that like a security guard that's like in the hallway or is it someone at the window?
So the, the retail space, I consider our facility, the
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's what I mean.
Okay, right. So, so we have an enclosed area called the entry vestibule. So it's almost like a man trap. So that's the first point of entry. We have a, um, tailor window, almost like a, a bank. The point of entry is there for the ID verification. Then they'll be buzzed into the retail floor and they'll be prompt to show their ID again once before we, um, finalize sales.
Okay. Let's see. All right. My last question, maybe this is better for the landlord. But is there, has there been any consideration as far as providing an emergency generator?
We do not have any plans for that, so.
Okay. All right, that is all the questions for now. And I guess I'll defer my security questions to the next, what next witness?
Uh, well, thank you, Mr. Jordan. Uh, do any members of the public have any questions for Ms. Gibbs? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions for Ms. Gibbs? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Not seeing any.
Seeing none, I close that portion of the meeting. And Mr. McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, applicant's next witness, uh, Mr. Darnell Gibbs. This is a security uh, witness and also another representative of the applicant that will be an additional, uh, security, um, more technical, uh, witness after Mr. Gibbs. Thank you.
Mr. Gibbs, if you please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please give your full name, spell your last, and give your address.
First name is Darnell, last name is Gibbs, O-G-I-B-B-S. Address is two zero six Tremont Avenue, Orange, New Jersey, zero seven, zero five, zero.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Gibbs, if you could, for the benefit of the board, uh, provide your, your occupation, your education and degrees.
Uh, once again, like my wife said, I would say, uh, thanks for inviting me, was able to attend. I appreciate that. Um, as far as me, I have over twenty years in law enforcement experience. I have nine years at the excess county sheriff office, and I have twelve years in military law enforcement. Also, United States Army Government, Air Force, now currently serving the Air Force as a combat tactics deployment minister.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. And your position with, uh, Pure Natural Vibes?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Gibbs, before we move on to some other aspects, uh, you heard some, uh, questions in regards to some of the, uh, security in the building in terms of, uh, people waiting to get in and how they'll be moved about and uh, the hallway and things of that nature. Uh, if, if you could, uh, provide the, the board the benefit of your understanding of how the operation will work from a security point of view?
Yes, I apologize. So would that aspect, it'd be played out the same exact way that they do at my current employer, which is this excess county sheriff office. We do large venues with two officers. And when I say large venues, have you ever been to a hockey game in West Orange? Or if you've ever been to the state and ring at Rashford Park, you'll have two officers for every three hundred, roughly four hundred personnel. We don't expect to have that in, in the hallway, of course. However, officers are actually trained to do crowd control. I'm trained in crowd control. I learned the crowd control technique, both the United States Army as a military policeman, and also went to the crowd control tech, uh, tactics at New Jersey State Police Department at Secret. So a law enforcement personnel, which I'll be employing as off-duty uh, security officers, will have that ability to actually manage crowds.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Uh, Mr. Gibbs, if you could also provide, uh, some of your, uh, personal experience, uh, in, in terms of CBD cannabis industry and your, your kind of efforts to educate the public regarding cannabis?
So I got introduced, uh, into cannabis, particularly CBD, uh, during my deployment to Afghanistan. I sustained an injury, um, where I injured my meniscus, my back, my shoulder. I had a little bit of problems with, uh, migraines and headaches. Uh, they kept wanting to give me Percocet. I wasn't a big fan of that because I knew that was a very aggressive drug. That a lot of service members and civilians were getting hooked on. So, you know, my wife did her due diligence and she started researching stuff and came across CBD. So I was like, you know what? It's, it's worth a shot. I, I don't have a problem trying it. You know, it's not gonna give me hope. So I came back from my deployment. I did my physical, uh, therapy. They continued to try to push, uh, Percocet for pain management. So I started using the CBD like my wife, um, instructed me to do so. And then over time, I want to say, in a matter of maybe two weeks, my pains start to reduce. Matter of a month, it was almost half. Then after that, it's literally ten percent or less. So I became a very strong advocate, advocate for CB, uh, non-TACs. And then I was like, you know what? I feel like this might be the way to go for other service members who sustained injuries, uh, severe spines or if not more severe demines. So you're supposed to use in the old years that they were, uh, prescribing to everybody. So that's how we came across, starting my company, our company, Pure Natural Vibes. I start off with just other service members who were injured as well, and then it just, yeah. So my personal involvement with CBD as a whole is, eh, 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 improved my life, uh, overall. Um, that's why we tried to educate everyone in reference to both CBD and, uh, TAC-based products. There was a lot of stigma saying, oh, well, you know, it's a drug, this, it's drug, this. And then I had to share with a lot of people that yes, it may be, been considered a drug at that particular time, but time has changed. And it actually showed that it had benefits, uh, to the marijuana itself, uh, particularly with both TAC and CBD. So I tried to educate as many people as I possibly can from both my experience and the research I've done, school and I've done for cannabis as well.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Gibbs. Could you, uh, describe your involvement, uh, with, uh, the New Jersey Cops for Kids organization?
I apologize. So the New Jersey Cops for Kids initially was excess county cops for kids. Uh, me and my partner, Amanda Bula, started the program back in two thousand sixteen. We started that program in an effort to bridge the gap in the community and law enforcement. We start off with twenty-four children. Now we have approximately a hundred and fifty children in our, in our organization. Uh, we do different aspects of law enforcement, uh, firefighters, EMT responses, CPR. And that aspect of giving children the idea what it is to actually be in that particular career field. Don't just push that career field. We have other individuals that come from different walks of life to share their experience, both positive and bad. Uh, we have the New Jersey, uh, New Jersey Youth Explorers, CC Academy, that I'm actually gonna come back from my military assignment. I wanted instructors there. So I, I love the youth organization. I'm the deputy director for, so I assist as much as I can where I'm on military assignment, but when I'm here, I help them out all the time.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. And also your, uh, food drive program as part of the Pure Natural Vibes mission?
So what we try to do is with the food drive, um, I'm not sure if any of you might have been aware, but I was actually published in a few news articles during COVID. There was a big issue with hand sanitizing cleaning materials and stuff like that. So what I did was I actually use, you know, uh, my company as a way to source some of these products and I was able to donate it, uh, throughout excess county and throughout the state of New Jersey. And the process of doing this, I was also coming across homeless. So I was like, well, it sort of sucks that, you know, we're supposed to be helping everyone else, but we're sort of overlooking the homeless. So at that point, we made it a, a issue to go meet to food pantries for the sole purpose of feeding the homeless, and of course, any other needed family that needs it. So with us, we plan on having a food drive. So the way that's gonna work is, is that we'll have a pre, uh, like a determined list, almost like, um, a list like they do during Thanksgiving time, where you'll have a list, bring this item into the store. Non-perishable items. You'll bring this item into the store and then in exchange of this item, you'll get it to town. I'm only purchased, and those goods were then donated to the church.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. And is it your opinion, Mr. Gibbs, uh, based on your experience in, in law enforcement, uh, both, uh, in the state and in the military, uh, that Pure Natural Vibes will, uh, work closely in conjunction with the township police department to ensure, uh, safe operations, uh, in both the interior and exterior of the site?
Uh, yes, sir. So, uh, we spend in communication with Chief Abbott, who proved that security layout. So with me being a law enforcement, I know that it's, I'm not gonna say it's easy, but it can be done where you can alternate, the, you can alter uh, the patrol routes that, which we take, should be just a matter of discussion. It normally done sporadically. There's no set pattern. I also took the course in the military, uh, called COIS. The way that program is actually designed is to help defeat, creating a pattern. So this way your adversary can actually get a jump on. So I plan on implementing that with possibly with Chief Abbott. So this way, possibly he can alter the West Orange Police Department's route. So this way we have a little bit more frequent drive-bys. I'll plan on doing the same thing, sitting down with personnel that's in patrol division of my employer, excess county sheriff office, to also assist me with that.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Uh, I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. So, uh, Vice Chairman Wilkes, do you have any question for Mr. Gibbs?
Um, no, no questions.
Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions for Mr. Gibbs?
No questions for Mr. Gibbs.
Council President Williams, do you have any questions?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Alper?
For me.
Mr. Guarino?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Klein?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So deliveries, you said, can you get, run me through how the deliveries are gonna happen, what time they're gonna happen, how it's gonna work?
So as far as the deliveries is concerned, the deliveries, they don't, they don't have a preset time. To ask my wife, you guys, my family, I do not create patterns. Reason why I do patterns is because in fact, once again, it gives your adversary the ability to jump on. So therefore, the deliveries, they're scattered out. I have an algorithm that I plan on using, same algorithm that I used while I was in Afghanistan, avoid, uh, ID, ID detection and hostile fire. So the algorithm that I'm gonna use is gonna be able to help me to pinpoint my deliveries. Once I have my deliveries pinpointed, that block of time will be blocked out to the point where there'd be no, uh, personnel that'd be allowed to that hallway sec, that, that hallway section lead up into our suite. So this way that clear, it could be a clear walk-in facility person to pull up. Uh, take whatever boxes that he's gonna have. The boxes aren't that big. Uh, take whatever boxes that he has for us, he or she has to deliver to us, and it's a smooth process.
Where are they gonna park the vehicle?
They'll park in a regular parking space.
What if there's not a regular parking space close to the door?
Say what?
What if this parking space is too far from the door?
I could block out a parking space. We have access to the entire parking lot.
Okay. So I think you probably should think about that. So the store is open eight AM to seven PM and deliveries are gonna be within that timeframe, not before eight or after seven PM?
Again, I'm sorry, my, I'm, I'm a little, my wifi isn't the best here. I apologize. I say that again.
All right. So in other applications I've been involved with, deliveries are usually before the customers arrive or after the customers leave. Your delivery window is between nine and five, and your store is open between eight and seven. So you're gonna be delivering while customers are gonna be coming in and out of the building.
That would be our primary means, but that was an option that was awarded to us, well, offered to us. I also required a reference to having free operation deliveries. Wouldn't be a problem. That would just be a matter of just talking to the shipper to say, hey, listen, and have our products delivered at a particular time earlier, opposed to during the business hours. That's not a problem. That could be amended.
So I, I'm just cur, I don't know the answer to this. State law, you're allowed to have deliveries while customers are in the store. Does anybody know the answer to that? You are, okay.
So you know, I visited, I visited three different dispensaries. So my initial assignment is Maguire Air Force Base for Dix. Uh, Joint Base Maguire, they have Curaleaf there. The venue in which I stay at is literally five-minute walking distance. In between my shifts, I literally would go to Curaleaf. I would sit inside the store. Everybody knows me in there. I would sit inside the store and watch their facility, watch how they operate. They've had multiple deliveries and the process of them being open. So therefore, I know it could be done, and I know that is allowed.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Smeraldo?
No questions.
Mr. Jensen? Let's see, Mr. Jensen, Mr. Cadoza?
Uh, no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lahaney?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jordan?
Is there gonna be another witness talking a little more on security?
Yes. Coming right up.
All right. And I guess it's more on the technicals, uh,
On the technicals. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Then I don't have any questions as of now.
Thank you.
Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Gibbs on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Gibbs on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing anyone.
Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the application. Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Mr. McPherson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, next, and final witness, uh, the applicant calls Mr. Peter Milano uh, Junior, uh, technical, uh, security, uh, testimony.
Mr. Milano, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and give your address.
Peter Milano, M-I-L-A-N-O.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Address, sir?
We're at the fifteen Eileen Court, Building twelve, Unit sixteen, Hillsboro, New Jersey.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Milano. If, if you could provide the board, uh, the benefit of your occupation, uh, your education and degrees, uh, professional licenses, if any, um, and, uh, any other appearances as a professional security consultant you've, uh, done?
Uh, I earned, uh, two master's degrees. Uh, one is sociology of research and I have a degree in, uh, MBA in finance.
Thank, thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Your firm employs, uh, Joseph, uh, Bonacci, who is a Your firm employs, uh, Joseph, uh, Bonacci, who is, uh, registered as a licensed burglar and fire alarm technician.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. And your particular industry experience in, in terms of, uh, safety and security?
Uh, well, I am a former police officer at US Army. And, um, I also have a, uh, experience as a public insurance adjuster, insurance investigator.
Thank you. And, and for how many, about how many years have you done that?
Twenty-five, uh, twenty-five years.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Milano. And the, the name of your company and the services you offer?
NovaCom Telephone Company.
Thank you. And the services you provide?
We provide telephone, data networks, internet security, burglar alarm, fire alarm and, um, data networking.
Thank you. Uh, and Mr. Milano, uh, if you could speak, uh, to, uh, the security plan, uh, for the site. Um, it is your understanding that the security plan has been submitted to the, as, as already been said to the township chief of police and approved via email. Is that correct?
Yes, that is.
Thank you. And it is also your understanding, uh, that the security plan that was submitted to the, the chief of police, in your opinion, uh, at least, uh, or at least meets or if not exceeds the requirements of the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. McPherson, I, I, I've got a question. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Milano, you have a degree in sociology and finance and you're a police officer.
That's right.
So you're testifying to security. What specific education or understanding do you have of security?
Twenty-five years of experience burglar alarms.
So now you, you, you plan and place burglar alarm alarms yourself and understand them?
I manage people who do. Yes.
Okay. So you manage people who do, but you don't do this yourself?
Not personally.
Do you plan burglar alarms because you understand how they work or you manage people who do?
That's right.
Ms. McGovern?
Yes.
I, I, I'm not understanding. I, I understand how Mr. Gibbs, from what he said, understands this security. I don't understand how Mr. Milano does. He has people who do.
Mr. McPherson maybe can, uh, explore more on the waider of his, um.
Sure, we'll get there, Mr. Chairman. I understand the, uh, question, but, uh, you know.
Go right ahead.
Very familiar with the security.
You, you have the floor. I'm listening.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Milano, is your, uh, understanding of the installation of the security plan, again, that was that, uh, your office, uh, conducted and prepared, uh, and was submitted to the chief of police and, and the state. Uh, you, it is, you, the, uh, all facets of the business are, uh, recorded via video surveillance?
Well, why didn't I give you an overview of what we provide?
Please.
Yeah, let's do that. All right. We'll start with, um, network, internet protection, detection. We are a sonic wall dealer and we install the, uh, sonic wall firewall that works on the internet. We have, um, experience of probably thirty-five years in that. We'll provide that. That is the internet security. We'll provide the, uh, connection to a computer network. We'll provide the, uh, security on that network through the sonic wall. That will, uh, that will constitute the internet connectivity. We also are, uh, representatives of Comcast. We've introduced Comcast. Uh, they work under us. Uh, they'll, they'll give us what we need in terms of static address. And, um, we have to have a connection where the, uh, site must be under surveillance for twenty-four hours a day by the state. We'll open up a VPN port, static address and allow the state to eavesdrop using cameras. That is, uh, required by the state. We will then provide video surveillance cameras. These cameras are NDDA, uh, NDA approved, uh, and they are relatively hacking proof, hack proving, hack, hacking proof. And, uh, they're specified by the federal government. So we want to prevent any hacking on the, um, cameras. That video surveillance. So we have the internet, uh, uh, protection and security. We then have the cameras, uh, protected from being hacked. Third part is a phone system. Phone system, uh, is built by Avaya. We are an Avaya representative. The phones have recording, uh, we'll have a, a phone recording of calls and we'll know who's on the phone. We'll have a profile of calling and we can provide that functionality. We will provide that functionality. The next part of it is, um, access control. The access control is made by Hartman. Hartman, a very necessary part of, uh, any, uh, understanding of, uh, security is a perimeter security. Uh, the Hartman system has the ability to, resource to have door ajar. In other words, you can't prop a door, hold the door open. Once you protect the internet, uh, I'm sorry, the interior, I'm sorry, the perimeter, you know, you substantially controlled what's going, what's coming in and out. That Hartman system has that door ajar control. It also has, um, certain other credentials like dual credentials. The dual credentials require authentication through a, um, key, a card and a keypad. We'll provide that functionality. That functionality also extends to having a profile of the usage of the doors who comes in, who comes out using these credentials. These systems are available, um, with, um, connectivity synchronized to the video cameras. The video cameras are then synchronized and what's called OnViz. Based upon that, you can go back and place in time and you can check the door. Who came in that door fifteen seconds before and after? And you can go back a very substantial amount of time. In addition to that, what we've done is we've, uh, converted the network video recorder to a, a very high level of recording. We're using four megapixel cameras. Those, uh, cameras will record almost a year's worth of activities. And you could in fact go back to a certain time and date and it will in fact play back, uh, access fifteen seconds before, fifteen seconds after. Very good product. That's a product. Next is a burglar and fire alarm, uh, monitoring. Uh, burglar system is made by, um, Honeywell, Demco, and, uh, it will be wireless and it will have a series of, um, uh, perimeter protection, tier protection, and they will be comprised of the, uh, door sensors. There will be, uh, infrared motion sensors and I, the thing I, um, I, I like a lot is a, um, shock detector. And, uh, we'll, we'll be, um, cutting over a system next week in Hackettstown that, uh, is, has all of these, uh, features and functions. Now, um, let's see this monitoring, unless I have. Then we'll go with some questions. I think I probably answered it. The, um, you know, we have the window sensors, we have the, uh, shock detectors, perimeter protection, video recording storage. This should satisfy the requirement for perimeter protection.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, perimeter protection and, uh, internet security is pretty important. We'll be looking at that. And also I'm a big advocate of, uh, making sure that video cameras aren't hacked. What we're looking for is a, um, a, a way of preventing people from creating profiles and patterns that, um, of eavesdropping that can be used to, uh, plan criminal activity. So we'll have the ability of limiting as much as possible, internet issues, uh, recorded conversations that we can eavesdrop on. We'll, we'll have a, um, relatively secure environment by detection and on the internet by protection on the database.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Uh, that no further questions, uh, for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Milano, so what ha, this is, this operates twenty-four hours a day. How, how long do you save the information for from the video cameras and the recordings?
About a year.
And is that saved onsite or offsite?
Onsite.
Onsite. Um, what happens if there's a blackout?
Power failure.
Power failure.
UPS. Batteries, batteries in the, um, burglar alarm, batteries and fire. In accordance with the, uh, specifications, uh, fire has a lot of backup in it, but we have also a UPS in it, uh, APC. I believe it's, uh, twenty-three hundred volt amps.
Okay. And, and how many hours is that equal to?
That, um, probably, um, I would say about twelve hours.
Okay. So would an emergency standby generator make sense?
I don't think so.
You, I'm sorry?
I don't think so.
You don't think so? Okay. Interesting. Okay. Um.
And let me, let me clarify that.
Go ahead.
The Hartman access control system is probably the heart of what you may, uh, have to look at. With, uh, Hartman, what they have is, um, they have fail secure, which means that you pull the plug and the, the system keeps the locks engaged. And that's, that's what you want. Now that will be in conjunction with electronics and the electronic system is a backup battery that stands by for the metal locks. So those locks will stay open, a low, closed rather, for quite a long time. And then you have the UPS that's really feeding it. So it's, it's good, it's a good amount of time, like twenty-four hours. I would say it's pretty good.
Okay. So now it's twenty-four hours.
Well, no, I mean, you have to take the load into consideration. Each one, the battery is in the, uh, burglar, burglar alarms, a battery for that.
Right.
Fire alarms, a battery for that.
Right.
Yeah. The, um, the overall system has the UPS, which is batteries in that as well. So based upon the fact that you aren't going to be using computers, for example, that can be, um, directed toward the video surveillance. Now, in addition to that, there is a, um, requirement that you have continuous recording. That means that what you have is a, uh, a great utilization of the, um, of a system. It's, it's actually recording when it's not really having to record. And usually they have motion sensors that activate and allow the record to take place. Otherwise it's dormant. But in this case, you're required to have a continuous recording.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Milano, Mr. Chairman, just to that point in your question on the power failure, um, the applicant, uh, you know, has instructed me to provide the board with the information that, and of course, in the event of power failure, uh, the applicant would station, uh, guards at the site. Uh, and certainly would close down, uh, until power is restored. Uh, the power, the applicant doesn't, uh, control a, a power generator for this, uh, building, uh, which is essentially, you know, what, what it would have to be for. Um, but they.
That's okay. No, no, I, I got the message. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Uh, Mr. Milano, I have another question. So a person walks in and how do you guard against a false ID? Are there, are there check, uh, electronic checkers like you have at the airport?
Um, you, you're talking about, uh, biosensors?
I, I, I don't know what type of, somebody comes in and they, they want to get in through the first set of doors. They present, they pr- present some type of identification. How is that checked through a national data bank?
Uh, no, not, not yet.
So you just look at a, uh, an ID and says, okay, here I am. I'm eighteen years old or I'm twenty-one years old.
I'm not sure. That's it. What we're talking about is the ability of the perimeter to be protected, but people have credentials. Uh, members of the public don't have credentials. So a, a person who is employed by the firm and a person who enters the, um, property in any inventory area will have credentials to log into the site by a card and a, uh, key, a code. A person will then have to leave the, uh, office, the location with a, um, a card and a keypad as well.
Thank you. I think I may be asking the wrong person.
Sure. Mr. Darnell Gibbs can answer that question.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Uh, let, let's finish with Mr. Milano. We'll go back to Mr. Gibbs. So do any, uh, Vice Chairman Wilks, do you have any questions for Mr. Milano on his testimony?
Um, yeah. So, so basically all the information as far as the cameras are just on site. You don't have a backup, um, offsite anywhere?
No, we have backup. Uh, what you have to do is get a thumb drive and you can back it up. The computer, it, it's a, a PC and the PC is available with a, uh, hard drive. You can take it offsite. Yeah. See, we do that.
Okay. No, no further questions right now.
Uh, Mr. Milano, the state doesn't require offsite backup of this data? That is not, that is not on a thumb drive. That's electronic offsite backup to the cloud somewhere?
It is available, yes.
That's not what I asked. I asked, is it a requirement of law or not? If it's not, I got it.
I don't think so.
Okay. We don't know. Okay.
I don't know.
Okay. Thank you. Uh.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Council President Williams.
Um, our ordinance requires that they maintain at least thirty days of, um, video footage.
Offsite or onsite?
Doesn't have a specific requirement for location.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Mayor McCartney.
No questions.
Thank you. Council President Williams.
No questions.
Mr. Alper.
Um, no questions. I, I do think the, um, the, the potential battery backup, uh, length on the UPS sounds really long to me. I don't think that's necessarily a concern for us, but it sounds like a, 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 I, I'm, I'm not aware of a battery backup lasting more than a couple of three hours at most, but not on us. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Guarino.
Um, I was saying something about when you look at credentials, Mr. Chairman, when, you know, if somebody presents credentials to get in his ID, is there any scanning method into a system that verifies they are actual?
Mr. Gibbs is going to get back to that as soon as we're done with Mr. Milano. I don't, I don't want to muddy the waters.
No, no, no. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Yeah. So, Mr. Milano, did Chief Abbott approve your security plan?
Uh, yes.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smeraldo.
No questions.
Mr. Jensen. Okay. Mr. Cardoza.
Uh, yes, point of clarification, uh, Mr. McPherson, at the beginning of Mr. Milano's testimony, um, and just now, Mr. Klein reinforced it. Uh, so the police chief, Chief Abbott, uh, reviewed and approved of this plan. Earlier this evening, I heard that the sheriff had approved the plan. Was that a misstatement or have both offices reviewed and approved the plan?
Uh, it's only requirement that the township review, uh.
But I'm, I'm just curious because that's what I thought I heard.
I, I, yeah, I think you.
I'm only aware of the township. I think he meant Chief Abbott, but Mr. Gibbs can advise.
Okay, gotcha.
Sheriff's, if he's conferred with the sheriff's office in addition.
Okay, that makes sense now. Just clarifying. Thank you.
No, of course.
Was, and, and I can't remember, I believe, uh, Mr. Gibbs had said he's currently employed by the county sheriff? That's correct? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Uh, no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Lahaney.
Uh, no questions, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes, I, I have a couple of questions. I don't know if this is appropriate for, uh, either Darnell or Peter, but I guess as far as, uh, cam, are there going to be cameras in the hallway?
Well, we're covering the site. Uh, well, three hundred and sixty degree coverage. The cameras that, um, I, I noticed on the print from the architect were, um, just in one spot in the parking lot. We're going to have east and west cameras. We're going to also have, um, north and south cameras. We're gonna, we're gonna have a, a, a footprint of the building around the perimeter of the building. And, um.
As well as the interior, correct, Mr. Milano?
Yeah, three, each, each room except the restroom will have three hundred and sixty degree coverage. We are not using any, um, uh, fisheye type cameras. Uh, they distort the image. These will be direct images, um, from the, um, from the walls. It'll cover three hundred and sixty degrees of every road, right across the board. In addition to that, we have the ability to place a, um, wireless camera in the parking lot to pick up the, uh, rear entrance from the telephone pole that's in the rear of the parking lot. That's pretty good. By the way, the cameras are, uh, night vision, they're color vision. They also have audio built into as well.
Okay.
Okay. I think it was testimony, I think, Mr. Milano, excuse me, I think there was testimony already that there will be cameras on the outside of the building. And Mr. Lawrence showed those, depicted them on the, uh, the pictograph.
I, I only saw one of them in the parking lot on the build, the red dot. There's just one. We're going to be putting a two.
Okay. Will there be any cameras in the hallway leading up to the entrance?
Yes, absolutely. We're also, uh, we're also looking at the, uh, common entrance into one hundred with, um, having that, um, that door, a, um, access, access control with other tenants as well.
Right. And Mr. Milano, you did meet onsite with the owner and with the applicant?
I was spent about two hours today. I was spent about two hours today.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh Joseph Bonati uh our our representative. Uh we discussed everything and Joseph uh Joseph has almost forty years of experience. I have twenty-five and he has forty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess I got a question to follow up on that, Mr. Chairman.
What was it? Mr. Jordan, are you come? Are you done?
I do have another one.
Okay, go ahead.
So.
In a minute, let Mr. Jordan finish, please.
I guess that has to do with the lighting. I know that the engineer said he wanted to request a waiver for. When it comes to the lighting complying with the ordinance and I'm kind of going through the plan and kind of with. So and I see that there's two existing lights in the rear. And I guess. In the rear yacht, like in the rear of the property, not like the rear of the building. And I don't really see any lighting around the building except for one, I guess, right in front of that. The pure sweet one hundred door. So I guess with without while requesting a waiver, how? Uh how can you ensure that there's going to be enough lighting for security? In the parking lot?
Mr. Milano, do you have a? Can you opine on on the lighting situation at night?
Yes, yes, I spoke to Nordy about that and uh Nordy will be providing some uh lighting, additional LED lighting. That is uh is it solar powered? Yeah, solar powered and we're gonna have those lights in parking lot. It should be pretty bright.
Are are they going to be like mounted on the building?
Yes, they will be.
Okay, Mr. McPherson, you'll have to have him give you a plan for the location of the lights on the additional lights on the building besides the one that was on the uh plan that we showed showed this evening.
Okay, we'll do.
Thank you.
That's a condition, right?
Yep, absolutely. Uh.
All right. So I okay, then.
Yeah, I think that's all my questions for now, so I guess.
Thank you. Mr. Klein.
Yeah, just to follow up. So if I'm looking at A two thirteen on the architect's drawing, Mr. Milano is right. There's only one camera over the door that says pure. Sweet one hundred. So there's another rear door for the exit. Are we gonna have a camera covering that? And then the other side of the building that faces the gas uh I'm sorry, not the gas station, the uh the bank. There's no cameras on that side and there's windows on that side.
Yeah, we're gonna cover a perimeter.
All right, so that's not shown on the architect's plans.
No, we're we're gonna cover generically looking at the building. You can walk at any corner of the building. You're gonna be able to be seen.
Right, and then so then that's why I think the architect needs to expand his footprint of the floors of the first floor to show cameras up and down the hallway to get that three hundred and sixty degree coverage. So I think that needs to be expanded on their plan.
The three hundred and sixty degree the recovery is is the um. The the interior of the building. Any room is uh covered by one hundred and eighty degree cameras on both those sides of the world, the north and south.
Right, you're talking about that. When you say the building, you mean the rooms that that pure natural vibes is going to be in. We're talk I'm asking about the hallway from the back door to the entrance and from the exit to the back door. There's hallways to be covered as well, I'm assuming.
They'll be covered.
There's already cameras uh just for the record. There is already cameras uh within the entirety of the building that are the owner. Uh operates, but if you know, if the board wants to see an interior. An exterior uh you know uh. Locations of cameras. Um I'm sure the applicant would be happy to do that.
Yeah, because we got to make sure that then then the landlord is keeping thirty days worth of security footage.
Right.
So it's two different systems, you're saying. You're gonna have a system for pure vibes, a system for the building.
Right, and there'll be over significant overlap. Um you know, but but the the plans that Chief Abbott inspected were. Only the system found to be acceptable were only the applicant's uh security. System, which again, we can't present here, but.
Right, we got it.
All right.
Okay. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Milano? Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Milano? Please raise your hand and be identified. Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Milano.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think there was one additional question for uh Mr. Gibbs, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Gibbs. So uh a client comes in and presents some form of identification. How do you verify that it is factually? Uh a a valid driver driver's license or state issued ID?
Oh, there's a system that's called Identif. Right, so the way that works is you know how in the back our draft slices or uh ID because a person may just have a state ID. You had that uh magnetic strip that's on the back of it.
Yes.
With that, every one of us receives. Uh ID from the state, that magnetic strip reads your information. So therefore, when you swipe it, all that information gives us to us. So this way we can verify that. If it's fake, it will be unreadable. It's almost like trying to swipe like a fake credit card and theory.
Okay, so. You have to have some form of state ID that's verifiable in order to get in.
Passport.
A passport. And and you you use the same methodology to verify a passport?
Yes, because it has that strip there. So the system you could swipe it or you could scan it like you're buying like groceries.
Okay, so they would do that twice, once to get in and once to purchase?
That is correct. So they'll come in. The little vestibule area. Initially, that's their first point of contact verification. You'll come in. You will conclude uh they were conduct their business. When they go to checkout, it will be done again because every transaction has to be moved to a person. And that information is shared.
Okay, excellent. Uh does any other members of the board have any questions for Mr. Gibbs? Any follow up?
And Mr. Chairman, I'll just follow up on the question of the location of the cameras.
Yes.
Any kind of condition? Here as to the interior of the building.
But in the hallway, I think the addition was the hallway. The hallway leading into. Because you're gonna have people queuing in the hallway.
And we want to show locations of those cameras as a a public document?
They're already on the doc diagram A one dash twenty-one.
But it you know, in the not in not in your locate in the hallway, when you walk in.
Right.
To the building, there's got to be a camera because you want to know how many people are queuing in the hallways. That correct? Doesn't that make sense?
All right, we'll agree to, you know, that there absolutely will be uh cameras in the hallway. I'm just not sure sure whether or not you want to see. The board would like to see as a condition of approval, some kind of uh plan to that.
We we don't we don't need to see your cameras or your security as long as it's there and and you want it. It's got to be on the diagram that. That's there, but we don't need to see it. Does that make sense? Uh, Ms. McGovern?
No, I you I mean, what what you want them to do is to submit. If if the security plan already shows the cameras, and I don't know if it does or not. Um. And then that would be so there has to be some document documented. Proof or establish where the cameras are going to be. So that somebody can follow up with that. So um whether it be on the architectural plans or the security plan submitted, um I don't know.
They add then the security plan submitted to the chief?
Right, so that there that there's something on record as to where the cameras are.
The cameras are on the security plan that was submitted to the chief. Uh that was part of this, but it was excised.
Is is there not going to be an additional one in the hallway to visualize queuing or is that one there already?
Thirty-one near four the hallway. So as per the state requirement, you have to be able to track a person. The moment they break that first door. Always go. Right. So the security plan is already laid out with those cameras.
So once you open the door from the parking lot, there is a camera in that hallway is what you're telling her?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we agree, Mr. McPherson?
Yes.
Okay, good.
All right.
A happy person. I like being a happy person.
I think we can just do the condition that there there will be cameras uh. On the entire perimeter and in the hallway. We don't have to say where they are necessarily.
Okay, very good. And some of them will be uh operated by the landlord and some of them and the ones that have been I previously identified in the application, we are operated by pure life.
I don't know if that's good because what if this what if the landlord's not keeping it for the minimum of thirty days?
Yeah.
And can the police look at the camera in the hallway so easily?
Yeah, I I think.
There'll be one cohesive system.
I agree.
Okay, how do we so?
So applicant must um maintain cameras covering the entire building and. Uh at all the access points, including the hallway up to and 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 the interior of the premises. We don't have to see the plan where they are, but they have to it's they have to follow that condition. So it would be the applicant's burden to maintain them. Keep the information the way the state requires and um for all of those areas.
Mr. McPherson, uh.
Or Mr. Gibbs, I think is trying to chime in here.
Security plan that was supplied to Chief Abbott. All lays out our security cameras. The security cameras that you are referencing in the hallway are ours.
Okay.
Those are the security cameras that we install in. Those security camera systems will be maintained. Record for as per CRC's policy.
Okay, so from so from the car, the customer from the car. In the door all the way into the retail covered by your cameras?
Yes.
All right, then we're good then.
Right.
Outstanding. Okay, um. Mr. McPherson, let's go back to the parking lot for a minute.
Sure.
So you'll have five to six employees. As Ms. Gibbs testified to, maximum of ten.
Hmm.
And that would be. Could that be ten part? That could be so that could be up to ten parking spaces?
Uh yes, if they each have a car.
Okay, worst case scenario is ten parking spaces. And then you have this thirty-five parking spaces in the contiguous four sixty-six lot.
Correct.
Okay, and you're going to take one spot in the parking lot and have it marked as security. It'll be labeled as security on the parking lot and a and a sign.
Uh for deliveries, you mean?
No, no. Remember, there was um there was testimony about uh there'll be a security guard in the parking lot. And there was going to be a spot identified for security. Am I wrong?
Upon upon delivery. Uh. They that spot can be cone off. If, you know, the lot is full.
Yeah, yeah, there wasn't a testimony that they were reserving one spot for security. It was just in the event they needed it for delivery.
Right, okay.
But but let me follow up with that. The ten employees are there? How many security guards are in those ten employees?
How many Mr. Gibbs? How many security guards are amongst the staff?
You repeat the question, I apologize. So so all right, so you're gonna have a certain number of people in the retail space, certain number of people dealing with the vault. Certain number of people checking IDs as they come in the door. Then you're gonna have a security guard in the hallway and you're gonna have a parking attendant slash security guard out in the parking lot. That all adds up to maximum of ten?
But while the security officers do not count as cannabis employees.
Okay, so then you've got how many security officers?
Security officer is going to vary depending on the pace of the store, anywhere between one and two security officers.
Okay, so let's say two. So now we're up to twelve employees altogether, Mr. Chairman.
Maximum.
Right.
What, twelve?
But yeah, just can I say something in reference to employees?
How many per shift?
Per shift, you're you're rare. You're you keep saying the maximum, right? We won't have ten employees in the store simultaneously.
Ever.
Where we broke out the schedule, we had anywhere between four to uh four to six employees in the store at any one given time. And then. There's an overlap of maybe two. Between like the. You know, like if I come off of work, come on to work. So it's like oh. So I there would never be ten employees. And this.
That's fine. I wrote down maximum ten employees, but that's okay, that's fine. So up to six, then you're saying plus two possibly for overlap.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so so it could be as many as eight. And then the two security guards outside makes it ten. So we're up to ten again. All right. So I think Mr. Chairman would finish your thought then about the parking.
Okay, Mr. Gibbs, so let me go back a second. When there are, let's say there's five employees in the store, who is checking identification? Is that the security guards or are they roving?
Oh, so the they're called budtenders. So the budtenders would be the individuals that'd be checking IDs at the best of. All right, so that. So that that window that you see now was on that diagram right there.
Uh huh.
Budtender would be checking those IDs as individuals. And then the. The staff who then rings up the order would then be checking ID again.
Okay, are the security guards roving or are they just stationed? They're roving?
They're roving. Like I said, this I'm literally implementing the same exact thing that I do at my.
Gotcha, okay.
Branchwood Park, talking about Branchwood Park having uh not Branchwood Park, but the side of Branchwood Park.
Right.
Near between a hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty.
Okay, would would the applicant use uh agree to a condition that uh the first uh. Security guards that they would look to hire would be from the uh off-duty West Orange Police Department if they fit the requirements of a security guard?
I have a problem with that, and that's what I actually employ. If I'm not mistaken, I might have not said it, but I said I was gonna work with the township of West Orange to hire off-duty officers.
Thank you. Yes, we'll put that as a condition. We appreciate that. Okay. Go for it, Mr. McPherson.
That's all of the witnesses we had on our list. Um. You know, if there's additional questions, uh. Happy to entertain them.
Yeah, okay, so I'm gonna go back to Mr. Hess number and I realize that's probably for the landlord. Uh and if you said the landlord or the landlord's representative is here, maybe we could hear about who's in the building and a little bit about the zoning. Uh agreement for that parking uh addition next door that's been that expired. And how that plays or it doesn't play. And can we hear from that person?
Sure, I I I'm not sure to the extent he'll be able to comment on the previous uh agreements. I believe he bought the property recently. As that's that's the only point I want to make, but he is on here uh to in further into the application. So if the board would like to promote him from the public to a panelist. Uh that can be done.
Yes, Megan, can you promote and could you give us the name, Mr. McPherson?
Uh Daniel Pedrosa. Is the owner of the of the property.
So.
Yes, I'm familiar with Daniel.
So while we're bringing him on, can I just double check? So. Lot sixty-three is what we're talking about. Separate lot from this lot is is where four sixty-six prospect is, and that's where the overflow parking is. We'll call it overflow. And that's that's part of this application and it's part of the notice two hundred feet from that property. All that stuff. Okay.
Correct, correct.
Double check, good.
Yep, yep.
So are you gonna update your site plan to include the parking strike down lot sixty-six?
Yes, we are.
Mr. Pedrosa.
There is. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Fine, thank you for inviting me tonight.
Thank you for joining us. So we have a couple of questions and Mr. McPherson said that you recently bought the building. Do you know anything about a uh a zoning uh resolution? Uh about shared space with four sixty-six that has expired?
Yes, uh there was a previous agreement that expired. Before we bought the property, um I purchased it in November of twenty twenty-one. And. I recently was in touch with the owner of four sixty-six, Bill Zona, and we signed a new agreement about a month ago. So as of right now, there is an agreement between the two properties where we have access to their lot during the same hours from eight to seven during the week.
Excellent. So is so with this agreement between this applicant? And four sixty-six be in addition to the spots that you have for the building?
The agreements with the owner, two owners, Mr. Chairman, not the applicant. Just for the record.
Okay, so. There's there was so you're redoing the the agreement that expired from the zoning. Is that correct? Or or is it just one agreement and if there are thirty-five spaces?
It's a new agreement. There was previous uh Mr. I just because Mr. Pedros is not that familiar with it. He can answer the question, Mr. Chairman, but. This is not a specific redo of the previous.
It's a new agreement.
A new agreement, we'll say that.
Thirty for thirty-five spaces.
Right.
And that's what you presented. Is that correct? So there's only one agreement for thirty-five spaces?
Right, that's thirty-five spaces that four seventy prospect the uh Mr. Pedrosa's property can utilize at four sixty-six.
Not specifically for this application.
Correct, correct. Yeah, that's that's the way it's phrased currently.
Okay, that's that's what I want to get clear.
Right.
Was. Maybe I'm the only one that thought that there was. That there was more, but I just want to be absolutely sure. So now that we have that in hand. So now that we have that in hand. Is there a variance needed for the building based on the number of spaces that could be occupied? Based on medical and mercantile? Or does this bring you up to code? Does anybody know?
Mister Chairman, I will say, um, that no variances were called out. And any of the board's professionals' letters. Uh, that, so from our, we, you know, from our perspective, and we know. Uh, this is the agreement that was in place beforehand and another parking agreement. Uh, no variances, uh, would be required, as per the board's, uh, professionals.
I, I hope they're less confused than I am.
I think I can explain it. Um, nope, neither.
You know, coming through.
The zoning officer nor the planner nor the engineer in looking at. The uses in the property.
Existing uses.
The existing uses in the property, um. Indicated that the parking, there was a shortfall on the parking that would have required a use fair, uh, parking variance.
Okay. Uh, uh, gotcha. And I think that was the only thing that we needed Mister Pedrosa for. Anybody else have any questions?
I do, Mister Chairman.
Uh, Mister Klein. So nobody's done a parking study to see if X number of employees, X number of customers. The tenants of the rest of the building can fit in seventy-seven parking spaces at their peaks. Whether they coincide with each other, peak at separate hours, I would have liked to have seen some kind of a study that says. Today, with seventy-seven parking spaces and this empty tenant. It works, but when we add nine, eight, ten employees, and we add ten, twelve, fourteen, whatever customers. And two security guards, and now we're at ninety-two parked cars. I don't know that, if that's true or not.
Mister Chairman, if I might, just very quickly, uh, again, no parking study is not a part of the conditional use requirement. Uh, wasn't triggered by any of the board professional review letters. If Mister Pedrosa, if you, if you don't mind, Mister Chairman, could you, uh, advise on your understanding of? The, how the use of the other parking lot works during the day in terms of how mu- how full it is? Or, or not?
Yes, I, yeah, so I have my own office in this, in this building, and four seventy prospect. Uh, so I'm there every day, and what I can tell you is that I've never seen our lot full. And the building is currently, I, I believe there was a question earlier. Uh, the, the building is currently at one hundred percent occupancy. And all of the tenants, with the exception of the applicant, Pure Natural Vibes, all the tenants are operating currently. And have their employees and their, and their clients, their customers, patients onsite. So with that happening. At this moment, we, I've never seen a full lot. Uh, so we would be adding this applicant's, um, parking load.
And Mister Pedrosa, how about four sixty, that lot during the day?
During the day, that's generally empty. And, and that's, as far as I'm aware, the tenants, my tenants of four seventy are not parking there currently. Uh, I don't, I don't see any of them parking there ever. I'm not sure that they're aware that they're allowed to park there. Um, even though they are now with this agreement.
Right, Mister Pedrosa, I'm sorry.
I just wanna add some clarity, so.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, in, in our letter, number fourteen, we did request a calculation for the parking, and the applicant's engineers said they will comply with it.
Right, we're happy to provide that as a condition.
Okay, uh, I, I, I think that if, uh, as long as it falls within the ordinance, it'll be no problem. If it doesn't, we'll come back to you, uh, with a, with a question. Mister McPherson, does that make sense? If we find, if, once you, once you provide the calculation, if we find that you need a variance. We'll come back and talk about it.
Well, I, I don't think your ordinance has a parking requirement in its current state. If you recall, when it was, there was a proposed amendment that the board reviewed back in March, one of the. Proposed amendments had to do with, uh, parking and how to classify it. Currently, your ordinance regarding cannabis retail does not have a parking schedule.
Well, we could.
As I recall it.
Right, we could, we could treat it as a business, which I think is what we did before, one space for every two hundred and fifty square feet. Which is what we've used in the previous cannabis approvals, because the ordinance didn't have it. We just use the, uh, general business ordinance.
Right, so I think it was, okay. So they're going by just the square footage, you're not going by the type of business necessarily, it's just sort of, uh.
This would be the square footage of the.
Right.
Retail space itself.
Right.
Correct, so we'll, we'll, we'll use that as a, as a guide, and, uh, we'll go from there. All right, so we messed that up big time then. We didn't come up with a better parking number for cannabis. Okay, but here we are, and. We're moving forward, okay. Uh, do, do any members of the board have any questions about this application? Good, I'm going to now ask, do any members of the public have any comments about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any comments about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified. And Mister Pedrosa, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Not seeing any hands.
Okay, we're gonna close that part of the meeting. Excellent, so, uh, Miss McGovern, can we go over conditions?
Sure.
I'm sorry, unless Mister McPherson wants to sum up, or are you summed?
I'm summed, thank you.
Okay, good. Miss McGovern.
Hi, um. So there was a question as to odor mitigation. And whether it was, where you, whether you wanna make it a condition. Do you wanna make that a condition? Because one of the witnesses said that they planned on doing it. I don't know whether you wanna make it a condition.
Miss Gibbs said, as I recall, she, uh, said they're gonna have some charcoal mitigation in it. And yes.
You want it as a condition, okay, so that's one condition.
They have a testimony, yes, that they're gonna do it already.
Will confirm the retro fire codes with the township engineer. They will, okay, the apartment filter. In the event of a power failure, they will close the facility and station security personnel. They will provide an additional lighting plan. They will have cameras covering the entire exterior of the building and in the hallway. And within the facility, the actual plans will not be provided to the board because they were provided to the chief of police and accepted. Uh, they will look to hire off-duty West Orange Police Department when possible to fulfill their security needs. Uh, they will comply with number fourteen on Mister Hess's report regarding the parking calculations. And the other aspects of, um, the report as they have indicated. And then, other than the ones where they requested waivers, which, um. I don't, I don't think you want me to go into the waiver aspect of it, they were made clear.
Yes.
I don't think there were any conduct. Oh, and they, they're going to, um, supplement their survey showing the marked parking spaces.
And the, uh, they're gonna update the, uh, the architectural plan to show the entire footprint.
I thought, okay, that was with the cameras, but now you still want that anyway, okay?
And the, and they'll mark, uh, they'll mark the plan with north.
Yeah, well, that would be as per what was requested in, in Mister Hess's.
Wasn't there a condition with the remediation code? I believe there is a conversation between that with the architect.
Mediation?
Mediation of what?
What do you?
Modify the striping of the ADA parking, but they'd already.
Right.
Uh, I, I, I think that was the rehabilitation code. We spoke about already.
Yes.
Okay, so that's already been addressed?
Yes, it was rehabilitation, not remediation.
Oh, okay, thank you.
They're gonna reserve one spot for delivery vehicles?
I don't think that was what the testimony was. I thought that would, they would, if a parking space was not open. And they knew a delivery was coming, then they would, they would, uh, preserve a spot. Mister Gibbs is nodding his head, yes. They're not going to have a dedicated delivery parking space.
Right, but I.
If you want that as a condition, I'm happy to do it. I just, that, that was vague.
Most applica- most applications have a loading space for this.
Okay.
But we don't have a loading space, so at a minimum, I think, he's gonna have to go out half an hour before he thinks the truck's coming and put a cone there.
Okay, so.
If it's empty.
My, my question would be, why can't the delivery truck pull right up in front of the door during deliveries? How long is the time for the delivery? I'm sorry, Mister Chairman, for the interruption.
There's no doors. I mean, there's no place to do it. It's, it, they have to park in a handicap spot.
Uh, no, no, at the location, if, as a. Normal delivery trucks would just pull right up in front of the door and perhaps even block the door. I'm not suggesting that that's what the delivery truck will do. But we're only talking about a, a van, so I, I'm just trying to understand, why can't the delivery truck pull? And, and what's the amount of time that it, for a delivery to a car?
Mister McPherson, eh, they have to, they have to sign in, doesn't somebody have to count it? They have to make sure that everything is appropriately there, sign off on it.
Mister Gibbs, I think can answer, Mister Chairman.
So the way the delivery, the way the delivery works is, you know how you got like the barcode that's on your box, like for like a UPS package? So all the items that be packaged into that box, it then be scanned based off that barcode. That barcode is then scanned by us to ensure that we see the package. Afterwards, then we'll do an individual inventory in the store. If there is a discrepancy, then we contact the, hey, you're supposed to send me twenty-four, but I only counted twenty-three.
And so how much does that take?
Of the, the delivery individuals, you're simply dropping off the box, like he or she isn't waiting for us to counter anything like that there. It's, it's almost like, um, like UPS, I, I would, I would say, they come up. Hey, you got three boxes, okay, great, no problem, give me your three boxes, we scan it. And then.
Yeah, I, I don't think a poor micro business is necessary for us to have a restricted spot for deliveries. It doesn't sound like deliveries are going to happen at a consistent time, it's gonna be randomized. And it's only gonna be, uh, from what I'm understanding, a ten or fifteen-minute maximum delivery time, so.
Right.
I, I don't think a dedicated space is necessary.
And there's not as many deliveries as a, a larger dispensary, not as often. And so, I, you know, I think that would, that's what the applicant would certainly prefer, is not to. Cone off a parking space for deliveries that are random, uh. You know, fifteen minutes, and then have that parking space be not available.
If, now, hold on, hold on a second. The, the store opens at eight AM. Nobody's there yet. The manager arrives at seven forty-five. He puts a cone out, cause today, today is delivery. He knows what time, but nobody else knows. The delivery shows up at ten oh seven, they're gone by ten twenty-one, then he takes the cone away. I don't understand, you gotta be close to the door. You got a security guard with a, with a gun, standing by the vehicle, and then another security guard. Walking all the way down a ninety-foot hallway to get into there, then he's gotta go into the vault and drop off the boxes and go back. So I think you need to be close to the door, no?
Oh, spot close to the door.
Deliveries, don't you have bank deliveries right around on the other side of the building where they come and pick up funds or money and they park right in front?
There is no right in front. Look at the aerial photo. If, there's handicap spots by the back doors, the entrance and the exit. There's no place for them to park, other than a parking spot.
I just wanna make it clear, so, um, you, you want us to put a cone in a parking space? When we, in the delivery?
You know that deliveries are coming on Tuesday. The manager shows up at seven forty-five, he puts a cone out on Tuesday. The guy shows up at two, two, two PM, so that space was not able to be used up until two PM. He uses that spot. Then after two PM, you know, he's not coming back, and you take the cone away. But you gotta be close to the door for this, no?
That's what you would like to see. I, I, I don't necessarily see a problem with that. We'll try to get a.
Give it a try, when, when I requesting you mark the parking spot, just put a couple.
No, just, just reserve it.
I have to be careful, I just wanna make sure that the condition can be enforced, so, um, that it's intelligible. So if I, if I were to state, store manager shall reserve a random parking space for delivery on those days. Not a random. Accommodate that.
The closest one to the door, next to the handicaps.
To the door.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know who your delivery company is. Is it the same company delivers everything, or you have different guys delivering different products, different days?
You have different, uh, vendors that do the delivery. It's not like one person delivers all cannabis.
Right, so then you're gonna have more than one vehicle showing up a week.
Oh, more than one vehicle showing up a week? Possible.
Yeah, so you, all I'm saying is the manager's gotta know what day that happens, put a cone out. You know, reserve that spot for an hour, two, three, whatever time he gets there, then take the cone away. And that way.
Excuse me, I, I gotta, I gotta interject here.
Uh, Mister, 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 uh, Smoraldo.
The applicants have testified that the, that the, uh, the deliveries are random. So, they're televised, they're tel- if he puts a cone out, it becomes predictable. Now we're telegraphing when the delivery's gonna be.
All right, so then if he delivers, he has to park in the, all right, so I don't care, it doesn't matter.
We're, we're putting a cone out there, then something, something, I, I think we're getting too minutia in the people's business.
But, but you, but other cannabis facilities have loading spaces, and when the.
That we, that we should, that, that we should look, dedicate a loading space and be done with it.
Better, that's better then, let's do that.
I mean, it's, we're talking about a cone here, people move cones.
Okay, so then let's, let's, the loading space.
Let's just, put a loading facility, that, that, let's just send this.
Then we lose parking space, then they'll lose parking spaces if we have a loading.
Is that necessarily being a micro distillery? I mean.
No.
Yeah, I mean, it's a.
Mister Chairman, I think we're overthinking this. Again, we're talking about a ten or fifteen-minute delivery at a random time. A couple of times a week at max.
I agree with that.
No difference from someone coming up to my house and dropping off a UPS pa- package in an Amazon truck. And they're parked there for five or ten minutes. It's not that major.
Guys, I, I think we're gonna leave it up to Mister Gibbs and his security, makes the most sense, and let the business do what it's gonna do.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I, I agree with that one.
Mister Chairman, if, if I might, I don't mean to interject, I really don't, but I think it's.
Go ahead, Mister McPherson.
I'm sorry.
Here you are.
I.
Come on.
The, uh, on the parking issue, I, I just wanna, I do wanna note, the applicant, we did notice. Uh, in the event that it would be required to receive a variance for the, the non-conformity of the parking. Uh, at the site, um, so, you know. I, we would prefer, you know, if that, if that's what the requirement comes out to be, that the board would, uh, grant that relief. Uh, tonight as well. Uh, we think we've provided, uh, plenty of testimony in regards to. Uh, the, the use of the parking on the adjacent site and the types of, uh, tenants that are at the site. Uh, so I just wanna, I wanna posit that we did notice for this type of parking variance, it's in our notice that was submitted, so.
Right, but you didn't, you didn't have testimony is exactly how many square feet, how many tenants, how many things you used. So, we, we don't have enough testimony on parking to give you a variant, or even know if a variance is needed.
It's not, because the cannabis business in your code doesn't have a parking requirement.
Right, so right now, let's pass on that. We're not gonna require you to put in a loading zone or a, or a cone. We're gonna leave that to Mister Gibbs and his security staff. Okay, good. What else do we have, uh, Miss McGovern?
I think that was it. I think we went through everything. Architectural plans will be submitted with the entire footprint. We went, we went through all of them. Do you want me to go through?
I, I think we've got that.
Yeah.
Does, does anybody else have any questions? Miss Lahaney did, or Mister Jordan, did we miss anything you think should be added? The only thing that we didn't, uh, number nine on Mister Hess was the emergency standby generator. And we had testimony that's not needed.
The only thing that you brought up was, um, the backup, you know, of, of the security footage. I mean, meaning it, it, there being, yeah, that, you know, either to the cloud or on a USB. I, I don't know how you enforce that, but. That was a concern that you raised.
Yeah, it's, uh, I, I think that's gonna have to be at the peril of the applicant. If something happens and they don't have it, that's at their peril. We, we brought it up, and they understand. So if they take it on a, a USB once a week, they'll take it on a USB and store it off-site once a week. Up to them. It sounds like they have enough security and they have a static IP address that they can send it to the clouds. Or, uh, an offsite, uh, very easily, so they can, they, they know that we're concerned, so they can discuss that as a business model. Okay, does anybody else have any questions or recommendations? Outstanding, I see none. I make a motion that we approve PB twenty-three dash oh seven, Pure Natural Vibes LLC. Block eighty-four dot oh one, lot sixty, Zone B four seventy Prospect Avenue, applicant. Application for conditional use and minor site plan approval to permitted licensed cannabis retailer. Go have a second, with, with conditions, go have a second.
Second.
Uh, Council President, Council President William, seconds on the motion, Yamalat.
Mr. Oppert?
Sorry, yes.
Mr. Waino?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
I'm not comfortable with the parking situation, cause I don't know what happens at six to seven PM, when possibly four sixty-six is opening and the building is still possibly full, uh, so, uh, and I would like to have seen some kind of a loading spot close to the door just for security reasons, but, um, so I'm just gonna vote no for those reasons. Okay, thank you.
Fine, no problem.
Mrs. Meraldo?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Mr. Wox?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen? No? Uh, Mr. Cardozo?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Voting yes, now, I mentioned before that I am familiar with the building, and I wanted to say that there is plenty of parking there, and most of now this will change, but most of the businesses that are in there are by appointment anyway, so it isn't, uh, steady stream of people coming in at all times, my vote is yes.
Chairman Barlow?
Yes, motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, thank you, members of the board. Thank you very much.
Have a good evening, the next regular
Congratulations.
The next regular meeting of the planning board is July fifth, two thousand and seven, at seven thirty PM via Zoom. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, everybody moves it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes are above the nose, have a wonderful evening, thank you so much, have a happy fourth and
Thank you.